All right, let's go ahead and begin. It is 9:01 a.m. Today is March, oh, sorry, March, May 11th, 2021. Just I went back in time here. This is a regular board meeting for the County of Lake Board of Supervisors, and we will start with a moment of silence. Is there a moment of silence from any of our board members? And so since today, we are going to do proclamations for military appreciation and law enforcement, I just want to take a moment to thank all of military personnel and law enforcement personnel who have lost their lives in serving their country and have appreciation and gratitude for what they do to keep us safe. Supervisor Simon, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Supervisor. Item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any extra items from board or staff? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled by board members? So I did want to pull item, let me make sure I have the right ones here. 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.7. And if there are no other items to pull, let's go ahead and ask the public, is there any items from the consent agenda that you wish to pull for further discussion? If you are in the Zoom room, please press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or if you're calling via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand so I know that you wish to speak. I see none in the boardroom, and I see none in the Zoom room. So let's go ahead and take action on the other items.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve items 5.1, 5.2, 5.6, and then 5.8 through 5.13. Does that get, I think that gets them all.
That is correct, thank you.
Second.
Have a motion from Supervisor Simon and the second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, if we could please get a roll call.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we're just gonna do an awkward pause for five seconds, and it'll be 9:05 a.m., and then we will go ahead and now begin our 9:05 a.m. item. Public input, this is for anyone that has any public comments that is not related to an item on our agenda. You have three minutes to speak. If anyone has a public comment to make, please go ahead and step up to the microphone. And in the Zoom room, if you have a public comment to make that is not related to an item on our agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand as discussed earlier. We'll start in the boardroom first. Please go ahead and give us your first and last name.
My name is Steve Zaleski. I live on the Buckingham Peninsula in Kelseyville. I would like to take a minute to talk about the impacts of the drought on Buckingham's Marina. And for anyone who uses either the west or south shore of the lake as access to Clear Lake, I think you're aware that it's, the Marina is the primary access to the lake, both for the public, for the tourists, for fishermen, and it's also the site of the Sheriff Department's primary access. Their office and their fleet is there, and they're in a central location. So it has important health and safety implications. At present, and I think the Rumsey is somewhere around 0.77, average depths in the Marina are about four feet, with areas certainly two to three feet. And I believe the mouth of the Marina is, at this point, somewhere between three and three and a half feet. And it's estimated that during the summer, water levels will drop to two feet below Rumsey. What that means is average water depths in the Marina will be two feet. There may be dry land at the mouth of the Marina. And the economic impacts would be significant, both to local residents. I think there's something like 200 slips in the Marina. Tourism, obviously, it's a primary access, probably the primary access, also for fishermen, and I think the sheriff has mentioned that, at this point, they can't watch boats or get them out of the Marina. Clearly, a dredging project's gonna be critical there. And the costs of such a project is, would be far beyond the economic resources of the small family business that runs the Marina, the Bredos. Fortunately, the community has within it the skill set to deal with much of this issue. My company, Northwest Biosurvey, we do, if not most, maybe all, or a great many of the environmental reviews for projects that come to the board and Planning Commission for permitting. We are donating our staff time and resources to doing the, all the environmental review for the project. Other members such as Peggy King, she spent, has spent much of her career doing research or project management and permitting for home stake mines and others. She would be able to do much of the government liaison and permitting. Still, we would need our local board's support, particularly financially. Ideally, since this is such a significant public resource, and due to the economic implications on tourism and fishing, and the health and safety implications through the loss of Sheriff's Department's primary resource and access to the lake, ideally, we'd like to find a way to do some sort of matching funds, with the understanding that this is a private Marina, but with significant public benefits.
And sir, just want to let you know that you've reached your three minutes. If you can go ahead and finish it up.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries.
I was gonna set my watch. We would, at the very least, need the board's support in a resolution for getting state and federal funding grants to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Peggy King, P-E-G-G-I-E, and I also live in Buckingham and enjoy using the lake frequently in our sailboat and our motorboat. And I had written, my husband and I wrote a letter to Supervisor Paeska about a month ago, and I had forwarded it to you all. And I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, but it basically outlines the purpose of the Bredos Marina, that it serves for the public. And my glasses are fogging up. So the sheriffs provide a very important service to the community, including safety education, search and rescue operations, accident investigations, responded complaints of reckless vehicle, vessel operations, assistance to disabled vessels, on-water security presence, and mitigation of on-water hazards, including hazmat navigation dangers, including debris removal. And I personally have had some pretty scary experiences out on the water and am grateful that we have a sheriff boat patrol to provide rescue services and also keep motorists under control, especially those that choose to drink and drive. So as Steve said, I am willing to help to try and find a way to get a dredging project done at Bredos. And it's, I believe the Marina is probably the only full-service Marina that we have on Clear Lake, and it serves a great public benefit. As Steve mentioned, the cost for dredging is quite costly, and we figure probably a minimum of a million dollars and maybe up to two. And we're working on getting some preliminary numbers for that work. And we will need board support to move forward with trying to find funding and maybe even with making some contacts with our legislators to see that if there's any additional funding related to drought and public health and safety. I know that there was a bill that was passed through a Senate committee recently in the amount of about $3.4 billion. Seems to be focused on water quality. And this project may not fit into that. However, I think that maybe the Department of Conservation or Boating and Waterways will have some additional funding. And I believe the federal government has also declared a drought emergency in the state. So I, my ask of the board is to be supportive of this dredging project and work with us as we, as we move forward and try and get this work accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment here in the boardroom? Get on anything not related to the agenda. Please come on up as soon as it gets cleaned up. It's your turn.
My name is Stephen Stalker. I request a moment of silence for Robert Bredo, Robert Carl Bredo. He passed away a year ago, and he, I'm sorry, his mask is. He was a, I'm, a very prominent member of the community, and he's very, very much missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, let me check in the Zoom room. Does not appear to be a hand up. So we will go ahead and close public comment and move on to our 6.2 item. 9:06 a.m., consideration of update on COVID-19. And I see that we have Dr. Bloom with us in the Zoom room. See if we can, there we go.
I am here. For some reason, my video is not working here. It says, the host has stopped it, unfortunately. Oh, hold on one second.
There we go. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Good morning Chairman. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you this morning about our COVID-19 response. As per usual, I'm going to give you a brief overview of how our cases are doing, our tier status, our vaccination rollout, and then I'm going to have Sarah, our epidemiologist, talk to us more in depth about the data and the demographics. And then I'll be discussing some other topics a little bit more in depth. So without further ado, we are doing well with our cases. Our cases in the county remain low. They remain about level as they have been for the past few weeks. For the week of the 25th to the 2nd, we've had 17 cases, new cases in the county, which gives us a daily case rate of about 3.7 per 100,000. And our testing positivity is 2.2%. So that is slightly above last week. That's in the low orange tier metrics, but still quite good and virtually flat for a county of our size. We are still quite far away in one metric to the yellow tier, as all of these other metrics are sort of teetering right on the edge of orange to yellow tier. And that metric is vaccination coverage. We are still far off of the state average for vaccination coverage, where the state is around 61%, and the county is around 49% of the persons in the county receiving at least one dose of vaccination. So again, on June 15th, all of these tiers will disappear, and we will move on to general recommendations. And as you need to stay in, with tier metrics for at least two weeks to be within that tier. So we would have to have yellow metrics for two weeks to become yellow. Once again, I would anticipate staying in the orange tier for the rest of the next month until the tiers disappear in a month. As far as the vaccination status goes, we have a surplus of vaccine. We have all three vaccines, J&amp;J, Moderna, and Pfizer. And so all 16 years of age and older in the county are eligible. And so I encourage people to get their vaccination if they have not done so. The age grade, excuse me, the age group from 18 to 49 is approximately 31% at least partially vaccinated. And the age group of 65 plus is 59% vaccinated. Those are the two groups, which I will focus on later, because I believe that they are the two groups that require the most work to increase the vaccination numbers. But other than that, vaccination is moving along. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Sarah for further numbers from this week, and then we'll dive back into the details.
Thank you, Dr. Bloom. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have just a brief update. Statewide, we continue to see good indicators, improving indicators. Testing statewide, that's the graph on the left, was stable from this week compared to last week. And the testing positivity is hovering right around 1%, 1% to 1.3%. So really positive news. Testing is stable right now, and testing positivity is at an all-time low. As is the daily case rate. So the most recent, these data were reported yesterday. 3.7 cases per 100,000 at the state level, all-time low really since the beginning of the pandemic. As Dr. Bloom shared, we remain in the orange tier based on metrics from April 25th to May 1st. The map shows you the 58 counties' status as of last week. Today, this will be updated, and I suspect a few more counties moving into yellow. But we'll note that the majority of the state's population, 60%, currently are in a orange tier indicating moderate transmission. In Lake County, this is the Epi curve showing the number of new cases identified per week. So this week's metrics were based on this week of April 25th, when 17 cases were identified in the county. And for the week we just finished, the week of May 2nd, to date have identified about 10 cases. So I'm pleased to see that we've been relatively stable the last couple of weeks with fewer than 20 cases, which is really positive. Switching gears into vaccine, vaccination coverage at the state level, about 63% of eligible Californians are at least partially vaccinated. And we can see by geography, there still remains a disparity. About 74% of people in Quartile 4 at least partially vaccinated compared to about 50% of people in Quartile 1. The state is focusing on communities with lower vaccination coverage, trying to increase coverage in Quartile 1 and Quartile 2. Over 27,000 people in Lake County are at least partially vaccinated. That's 52% of Lake County residents, 16 years of age and older. 41% of people are fully vaccinated. I'll make a note here on the data. Previously, federal data was not integrated into the California Immunization Registry. I just got a note that it has been. So I will be confirming this with the state data team, but my understanding at the moment is doses administered through any federal programs, which would include IHS, should now be included. Again, I will confirm this, but wanted to note that, because I'm reporting these slightly differently because of this, this notice that I received. So over half of the eligible population now has at least partial protection through the vaccine. And wanted to share, you know, take a closer look at who has been getting their first dose since everyone over the age of 16 became eligible on April 15th. So that's what this slide shows. It shows Lake County residents who received their first dose between April 15th and May 7th. And that was over 2,500 people. And you can see the distribution by age group, by where they live. And that 52% of doses went to males. You know, this doesn't, I want to just know what I think these data tell us and what they don't tell us. The question of vaccine hesitancy is, is hard to fully answer. So these data don't tell us that. But they do tell us over the last three weeks or so where people are, you know, are getting their first dose. And so I think that's important to think about and look at your communities and see if you think there's opportunities to improve vaccine messaging in those places. What I do think is really important to note here, looking at vaccination coverage by combined ZIP codes, is that about each week, or about every week, we see about a one percentage point increase in these ZIP codes to 38% of people at least partially vaccinated, and now about 51% of people partially vaccinated in these ZIP codes. I think it's really, there's opportunities, particularly in ZIP code 95422, to really focus vaccination efforts, as that is one of the communities with the lower, lower coverage right now. Though it is increasing steadily each week, it still remains lower than the county average. And I think that's in a large part due to the tiered system and eligibility to get the vaccine out as it was rolled out. But now that everyone is eligible, I think there's a great opportunity to target communities that didn't perhaps have it available to them since the beginning and really work to increase that coverage, at least at the, to the county average. And I'll note here that we continue to see, again, relatively between Latinos and white non-Hispanic residents, sort of on par every week with the increase in coverage. So 42% of Latinos at least partially vaccinated and 45% of white non-Hispanics at least partially vaccinated. And then lastly, noting vaccination coverage by age group. So an estimated 6% of people 16 and 17 years of age have gotten at least one dose. 31% of people 18 to 49, which is our largest age group here at about 22,000 people, are at least partially or fully vaccinated. 61% of people 50 to 64, and 59% of people over the 65 and older. I'll note that I think this is also a really important population here, the 65 plus. The increase in vaccination coverage among this group has really slowed in the last couple of weeks. And there's still 41% of people, 41% of 17,000 people who have not had at least one dose. And so I think this is an important population, because they may be higher risk due to their age and other factors. As I think this younger age group, where 31% of people have received at least one dose is an important group and perhaps an opportunity to target as younger people become eligible for the vaccine. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Bloom to speak more about vaccination coverage. Thank you.
You're muted, Dr. Bloom.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much for the reminder. Thank you, Sarah. So just to go a little bit further into the details. Again, the cases are going well. Last week, there were 17 new cases, which gives us a case rate of 3.7 per 100,000, which is actually the same as the state as it is currently. And our testing positivity was 2.2%, with the state hovering around 1 to 1.3%. So just minimally higher. It's really about the same considering the size of our county. So this is actually quite good news. This is very low. And so all I can say is keep it up, because we are doing well in this respect. As far as the tiers go, this level again is a low orange tier. And, and we're hovering right around that line to move into the yellow tier with metrics, except for the vaccine coverage, which has to be within 5% of the state average. And as Sarah just said, and I misstated earlier as I was using data that was a little bit older, as we, we only get the data very shortly before the board meeting. The state vaccine coverage is actually at 63% with at least one vaccine dose being given. And in Lake County, we are at 52%. I misstated before, I said 49. So we are at 52%. This work to increase the vaccination coverage to our goal, which is to be within 5% of the state average, and our overall goal, which is to be at 70%, will be certainly slower than it has been in the past, and it will be more difficult and targeted. So there's still plenty of work to be done. But our goal is still to be 70% of the population of Lake County to be vaccinated and to be fully vaccinated, not just partially vaccinated. That would be if you have a two-vaccine dose of either the Moderna or the Pfizer, that you do receive those two doses for your full vaccination coverage. And that is our goal. Regarding the tiers, once again, in, on June 15th, the tiers will go away. There will be further guidance from the state, but it's gonna be in line with what we've already been doing with masking and distancing. But the actual red, orange, purple, yellow tiers will disappear. Speaking of that, there have been some changes from the state that I did want to talk about regarding masking, regarding distancing. Now that there is a good percentage of the state that is vaccinated, the CDPH, the Public Health Department for the state, on May 3rd has put out new guidance, particularly broken down for those who are fully vaccinated and those who are not fully vaccinated. So I wanted to mention what these new state guidelines are. For those fully vaccinated, if you are fully vaccinated, again, and I want to be clear with the definition here. Fully vaccinated is that you have received two vaccine doses if you have the Pfizer, Pfizer or the Moderna vaccine. And if you got the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is only one dose, then you have received your dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and you have given yourself two weeks for your body to be taught how to respond to COVID and have that vaccine disappear out of your body. But you have given your body time to learn and to protect yourself. So it's two vaccines or the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and then two weeks after. And after that, you're considered fully vaccinated. So if you are fully vaccinated and you are outdoors, then you do not need to wear a mask. The requirements of mask-wearing for outdoors have gone away for fully vaccinated persons, unless you are in a crowded environment, such as a festival, a large music venue with many people around, a street fair, something of that nature, sporting event, then the recommendation is still masking in a crowded. Then the recommendation is still masking in a crowded outdoor environment. But other than that, you do not need to wear your mask outside if you are fully vaccinated. If you are inside and you are fully vaccinated and you are with other fully vaccinated people and there is no one there that is unvaccinated, but it's all fully vaccinated people. Then you also do not need to wear your mask and you do not have to maintain social distancing at all times. If you were all fully vaccinated. Now, so just to repeat that, if you're inside with fully vaccinated people and you yourself are fully vaccinated, you do not need to wear your mask, you do not need to distance. If you choose to, that's fine. But this is the current state guidance. Now, if you are indoors and you are with people who are not vaccinated, so for example, if you were on public transit, if you were in a business and you don't know if people around you are, are vaccinated or not, you still need to follow the guidelines. You still need to mask, you still need to remain socially distanced as certainly you don't know the other people around you and their vaccination status. Now, I wanted to discuss if you are not vaccinated. If you are not fully vaccinated, meaning if you have only received one dose or it has not been two weeks yet after your second dose of the Pfizer or the Moderna vaccine, then you are considered not fully vaccinated. And you still should be wearing face coverings while outside if you cannot distance yourself appropriately from other people. And certainly the same would go for if you're in a crowded situation like a fair, like a concert, like a sporting event. Then you absolutely should be masking during that event. If you are indoors and you are not fully vaccinated, then you absolutely should be wearing your mask and you should be socially distancing as you have been for the entirety of the pandemic. And those are the, the major changes. I should also mention one other change, which is that if you are fully vaccinated, again, if you're fully vaccinated and you are visiting persons within one family, one family group who are unvaccinated, the recommendation is that you do not have to wear your mask for that. But if you're in a setting where you're visiting multiple people from multiple families, it's still to mask in that indoor situation. There are other changes. Those are the ones I wanted to highlight. But if you would like to see the full exhaustive list of changes, then you can visit C D P H, C D P H dot C A dot gov, which is the Public Health Department's website for the state for the list of all of the changes. So moving on, I wanted to talk about the vaccine rollout. So as Sarah has mentioned, demand has slowed a little bit with the vaccine rollout. In particular, in the sixty-five plus age group and somewhat for the eighteen to forty-nine age group. So first, the sixty-five plus population, which is fifty-nine percent vaccinated. Really, that number hasn't moved that much. And as Sarah mentioned, at least forty-one percent of those in the highest vulnerability for a death and for morbidity, meaning symptoms and significant long-term damage possibly if you contract COVID. Those most vulnerable are, are still significantly under vaccinated. So our work needs to be within this group. And so the efforts at this point will be targeted towards this group still. And if you were in this group and you wish to get vaccinated, there are many opportunities to do so. You can go to My Turn, which is the state scheduling website and schedule your dose. And then there are also locations that you can look for within the county that will be providing walk-in service without vaccinate, oh, excuse me, without an appointment. Again, I wanted to mention eighteen to forty-nine age group because that is the largest population within the county when we look at these age group demographics. And therefore, it's the most important that that group, considering these are the largest age, age group walking around in the county and interacting, that this age group be vaccinated. And we are still only at thirty-one percent vaccinated for this group. This number is increasing. You know, part of that reason is because of the rollout of the vaccination. So that's been pretty much the least amount of time that the vaccine has been available to this age group. But still, this age group is lagging behind state averages. And so we want to target this age group as well for further protection and vaccination. And especially because in family units, this is the age group that is moving around and visiting those who are a little bit more aged in the sixty-five plus population. And so to protect your family and to protect your loved ones and not carry this, this virus to them would be why we want this age group to become vaccinated and decrease the likelihood of transmission. I wanted to speak for a moment about the fact that we have all of the vaccines. As I mentioned before, the Moderna, the Pfizer and the J and J vaccine, and we are very fortunate for this. There are many places in the world who are unfortunately experiencing a very, very high disease burden and disease rate from COVID nineteen and attack rate. And we in Lake County are very fortunate that we have access to these vaccines and you can get them if you want them and you can get the protection. So that is why I'm harping on this because we should not pass over the fact that we are very fortunate and that we live in a place where we have access to this. So please take advantage of it. I wanted to talk about our plans from the Department of Public Health at this point in the setting of some decreased vaccination demand. So the Department of Public Health has been having these large drive-through clinics in Lakeport and in Clear Lake. And we have been in the process of demobilizing these clinics as there are now many other locations to obtain vaccine such as Safeway, such as pharmacies, such as the OptumServe sites, which are in Lakeport and also in Lower Lake, such as Walmart or your health system, Adventist or Sutter. So actually tomorrow, which is May twelfth, that is the last day that these drive-through sites will be up and will be functioning and they will be delivering second doses. And then after tomorrow, these sites will be going away. This is just the Department of Public Health drive-through sites. As far as people who are scheduled for the dates after this, they have been moved to the alternate Optum Serve sites or other sites to obtain the vaccinations. So with the Department of Public Health, I wanted to briefly talk about our next steps in the setting of, of talking about these different tiers, these different, excuse me, tiers, these different age groups and the slowing vaccination demands. So with the demobilization of these larger drive-through vaccination sites, the Department of Public Health will be now focusing more on more targeted vaccination, meaning pop-up sites and mobile site, vaccination clinics in areas that we would like to help obtain access to have this vaccination. So as Sarah discussed, there are certain zip codes in the H P I one quartile that are lower in their rate of vaccination uptake. And therefore, they will be targeted a bit more for vaccination, vaccine access to provide this opportunity for vaccination to these areas of the county. We are also going to continue messaging about the importance of vaccination and plan on doing some targeted messaging to various different populations that have lower vaccination uptake. We also are planning to leverage our county partners to deliver vaccine at trusted locations with our trusted partnering groups to help to combat vaccine hesitancy and to help to discuss vaccine hesitancy with those who are hesitant to help to deliver that vaccination to people who are somewhat on the line and not sure if they want to get vaccinated or not. So by discussing it with your doctor and then also by having the vaccine available through trusted groups. This is our, our next step at targeted vaccine access to slowly and incrementally increase the vaccination coverage within our county. I also wanted to, for a moment, talk about children. As we discussed before, the sixteen-plus population is now eligible for vaccination. However, soon in the future, I anticipate that the twelve-year-old and higher or more aged population, over twelve years old, will be eligible for vaccination with the Pfizer vaccine. This is the communication that has been coming out of the FDA and this is what I wholly anticipate. Therefore, I would anticipate that this is going to happen in the near future and that these vaccines will be available, or at least the Department of Public Health is planning for these vaccinations to be available through your regular vaccine provider. So that would generally be your regular pediatrician or your regular clinician for your child who provides your other vaccines. Additionally, the vaccine will like, the Pfizer vaccine for children will likely be available through select other vaccination sites, as I had mentioned previously, whether that be pharmacies or Safeway or Optum Serve. And, and I would anticipate that moving forward. So in conclusion, cases continue to be low. And I anticipate them to continue to be moving along in this very slight up and down movement, but basically at a low plateau. We are in the orange tier. We are still right on that yellow line, but with the vaccination coverage, we are still significantly far away from the state average. So if we can reach that within five percent of that state average and keep our numbers so low, there is a very slight possibility that we could move into the yellow tier prior to June fifteenth, when all the tiers go away. But I think that that's a low likelihood. And so I would just plan on being with the orange tier restrictions and metrics until that goes away on the fifteenth of June. As far as vaccination coverage, as I mentioned, there is a slightly decreased demand. And so the, the targeting is going to be for the sixty-five plus age group, which has stagnated a bit as that is the most at-risk age group and the eighteen to forty-nine year old age group. I wanted to reiterate one more time the new guidelines for those fully vaccinated, that you can be outside without a mask. And you can also be inside with others who are fully vaccinated, as long as everyone there is fully vaccinated, without a mask and without having to social distance. But you may do so if you want to. If you are in a location where you are in a crowded location, you have to wear your mask still. And if you are not vaccinated and you are outside and you cannot maintain social distance, you have to wear your mask. And if you are inside and you are unvaccinated, you have to wear your mask and still remain socially distanced. And then lastly, if you are anybody, if you were in a public location such as, that is indoors, such as on public transit or in a business, then the recommendation is still that you wear your mask and that you socially distance if you're in any environment where there is, there could be people who are vaccinated and unvaccinated. Where to get your vaccination? I think I've mentioned that a few times already. You can go to My Turn. You can schedule your vaccination. There are some locations doing walk-ins such as Walmart and Optum Serve sites. The Optum Serve sites are in Lakeport and in Lower Lake. And so there are many, many sites to get your vaccination. So please do so. And please, if you are hesitant, if you are not sure, if you are waiting to see, please talk to your, your healthcare provider who you trust to discuss this as there are many millions now of vaccinations that have been given. And this is a safe and effective way to combat this disease. And I highly recommend that you go to get your vaccine so that you can get protected and your family can become protected. Again, all the vaccines are available, Johnson and Johnson, Moderna and Pfizer. All those sixteen years of age and older are eligible and soon it will be twelve years of age and older, as I have just discussed. And lastly, we are keeping our eyes on that goal of seventy percent coverage, which would give our county a significant protection against COVID nineteen and its horrible effects. So with that, I'm going to end my presentation. Thank you very much for your patience and for listening. And I'm, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Dr. Bloom, and thank you to Sarah as well. Jessica, Supervisor Pyska.
Thank you, Dr. Bloom, for that presentation. I have a couple of questions. First, do we have an understanding on what the age groups are for the people that are testing positive these days?
I, I actually will ask that to Sarah if she's still on the line as I don't have the specific breakdowns. I, I will say that the, when I last went over this with Sarah, I still thought that it was not one specific age group. But I will defer that because I don't want to give you an incorrect answer if Sarah is still here.
I do not see that she is still here with us on Zoom.
Supervisor Pyska, that is a good question and I will, I don't want to give you the wrong answer. So I'm going to defer that and I will get that answer to you.
Oh, thank you so much. So she mentioned that she was adding in the I H H S patients or clients. And I was just wondering what percentage of those have been vaccinated so that, you know, maybe that's a group that we could work a little harder to assist.
And with that, I actually don't have the data and I'm sorry to say that again, I don't have the data in front of me for that. My understanding was many of those clients are vaccinated at this point. But again, I will get you that data specifically as much as I have access to. I will get to you so that you can see the data. And, and that is a good point.
Thanks. So one of the things that I hear frequently is everybody I know has either had it or is vaccinated. So what is the guidance on for people that have already gone through COVID? And what's the recommendation there? I'm, I'm fairly sure that we still want them to get vaccinated, but I'd just like to hear that from you, what your thoughts are.
Absolutely correct. Absolutely. So the guidance is if you have had COVID, that you still become vaccinated. If you have had COVID, then it is likely that you do have some protection. You probably do have some immune protection from that infection. That is how the body works. And that is how the vaccines work is that they expose your body to a certain protein that is on the virus so that your body can recognize the virus when it comes into your, into your body. It's a, it's a non-infectious protein from the virus that is what the vaccine is trying to show your body so that you can recognize the actual virus when it shows up. So if you've had the virus, then you do have most likely some coverage, some immunization and protection from the virus. The problem is that there are a number of variants to the virus and it's unknown exactly how much coverage and how much protection you actually have by being infected by COVID nineteen if you've had it previously. And it's been shown that actually your protection is significantly increased if you do get the vaccine, even if you've had the infection previously. So while you still may have some protection from having had COVID nineteen, it's unknown exactly how long that protection lasts. And it's probably for a few months afterwards. Again, that's not an official recommendation from myself, but just, just based on how immunization works and, and what we've been seeing. It's probably some level of protection that's greater than zero for a few months after you've had COVID nineteen. But going, moving on beyond that, the protection is likely less than you would get from the vaccine. And it is for a shorter period of time than you would get from the vaccine. And, and then there's questions about And, and then there's questions about the variants, which with the vaccine, the protection that you get from the vaccine has been shown that it's active against a number of different variants, but we don't have any data or really any very good knowledge about, you know, what you would get, what kind of protection you would get from if you were actually infected with the virus, as it's really difficult to do any sort of scientific study on that. So that being said, that is why, a little bit further explanation why it's recommended that you get the vaccination, even if you've had a COVID infection previously. You can think of it somewhat as almost, although it's not this in actuality, but it's, it's somewhat similar to obtaining a booster shot. You've had some sort of immunization from actually having the virus, but having the vaccination will increase that protection significantly and should protect you over a longer period of time.
Would it be helpful to do some targeted messaging on that topic?
Certainly, that can, that has not been a focus, but that's a good idea, and I think that that would not be a bad thing to do. So yes, thank you for the suggestion. We can absolutely do that. It's been more focused on, please get the vaccine. But at this point, yes, that can absolutely be, be put out as well.
Great, and I just, I'm really glad to hear that. We're going to start with the pop-up in mobile sites because I think that's really going to help access the people that are having a difficult time getting in. So I appreciate you answering all my questions. Thank you.
I'm sure it's my pleasure.
Any other comments or questions from supervisors? Okay, I do have just a quick soapbox issue. It's, no matter how hard we try to reach the criteria that we're told we need to reach in order to get to a different level of restriction, it seems we get hit with another criteria that prohibits us from moving forward. And I have to share my frustration that if you look at the list of vaccination rates on a per-county basis, those who are of affluence are at the higher levels of vaccination rates, and those of poverty are on the lower levels of vaccination rates. And that should not be a burden on our businesses. That is an equity issue that the state tried to work on but failed to meet, and that should not be a restriction that we're placed on. We are doing our best. We've been underneath the 2% before. Today, we're not. We've been kind of going below and above that line. But everything shows that our hospital rates are great, our deaths are great. We haven't seen those types of burdens like we saw back in December, January, and yet now we're being burdened with, sorry, but you don't have enough people that are getting vaccinated. And when you, when you say you have to be within 5% of the state average, and there is such disparity with the highest levels of vaccinations versus the lowest levels of vaccinations, I just have issues with that. And so I just wanted to express that. I have been expressing that through my CSAC contacts with the state. We, we have to be able to make us feel like we're progressing and not constantly being shown new barriers because they decided to change the rules on us. And that's why I can't wait for June 15th, for that tier system to just disappear, because it seems it's been a bit of a mess ever since we started with that tier system. I did ask that same question. I didn't directly ask through the public health, but I'm also interested in, even if it doesn't show us anything that we can utilize data-wise, I think it'd be interesting to see who's still getting COVID-19. Does it show, does it help us in showing that vaccination works based on the percentage of vaccination on those age groups and looking at those age groups now and who's getting COVID-19? I just think it would be useful data to at least review and look at, and hopefully maybe even utilize in our mission to get people to accept and say yes to taking the vaccine. And so hopefully that's data that we can get maybe within the next couple of weeks, and we can go ahead and dive into that. Appreciate your presentation, and if there's no further comments or questions from the board, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see no public comment here in the boardroom, and I see one hand up over in the Zoom room, and Madeline Tuttle. I just sent you an unmute message, I believe.
Okay, yes, this is actually Dr. Will Tuttle. I'm on my wife's iPad here. And yeah, thanks for the report. So now, as of April 26, there are over 33,800 people have died, according to the Vaccine Adverse Effect Reporting System, which reports between 1% and 10% of deaths. This is more than in 20 years of the vaccine reporting system, just in four months. Over 16,006 serious injuries, again, one, only 1% to 10% at most are reported. So we're talking about a so-called vaccine with unprecedented levels of death and serious disease and complications and injuries, and we're being told and we're being deceived that this is safe and effective. According to the Supreme Court, when they actually gave the pharmaceutical industry blanket immunity back in 1990, they said, quote, "that vaccines are inherently unsafe," end quote. So that's why they gave them blanket immunity, and they're, and they've since then made so much money that they've captured the mainstream media, they've completely captured CDC, they've completely captured the medical school people. So they're, they're basically deceiving us, and these are crimes against humanity that are being rolled out, and people are being very seriously injured by this. We're going against the Nuremberg Principles, which, which require that people who are in an experimental protocol, that they be fully informed. And they're not, people are not being positively fully informed. People are being lied to that these are safe and effective. That's why they're getting vaccinated. These are not vaccines. These have never been approved by the FDA. They've only been authorized for emergency use. And so under this emergency use, people are being lied to. Anyone who tries to question the efficacy or the safety of these vaccines is censored. And so this is a terrible situation where, when similar things happened in Germany or in other places, and people ended up going to jail for this kind of behavior that you're engaging in, you're going, you should be going to jail, according to the Nuremberg Principles, of deceiving people and not allowing a full, accurate accounting of what's actually happening to, to people because of this. And also, the, the test, the PCR test is being monkeyed with now. The CDC, this is amazing. I mean, the CDC has allowed the amplification rate to be around 35 to 40 amplifications. So that's going to guarantee to give lots of positive, false positives, to make it look like we have a terrible pandemic. And now what they've just done is said that anyone who is vaccinated, you should only use 26 amplifications, which is going to show, nobody gets sick. Nobody's test is positive if you're vaccinated. So this whole thing is based on deception and lies, just like the way the, these pharmaceutical industries. You have Pfizer, which is the most criminal company in the history of the United States with multiple charges of racketeering and deception and lying to people. Horrible, all of these are criminal organizations, and you're basically just aiding and abetting criminal organizations and hurting people and not giving another, the other side. And I think it's incredibly irresponsible that you have, you have to do due diligence and actually look at what the data says. The number one epidemiologist in the United States, Johnny Amidis of Stanford University, has said-
Dr. Tuttle, it's been three minutes. Please go ahead and finish.
...has the same death rate or mortality as the flu. So we're doing all of this, and masking has been shown to be completely ineffective. It's harming people. So, you know, I really want to say, you've got to look at the other side. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question for you, Dr. Tuttle, and I mean no disrespect at all, but what is your doctorate in?
I have a PhD from UC Berkeley in education, and I took courses in public health in qualitative and quantitative research methodologies, and I understand science, and we don't have science today. What we have today is-
And that, I don't need a longer answer than that. You've already answered it. I just wanted to let the public know that you are not a medical doctor and you are providing an opinion based on your knowledge and your understanding. I just want to make sure that when somebody says doctor in a conversation about a virus, that people understand who is speaking and from what level of expertise they are speaking from.
Right, but there's many doctors who agree with what I'm saying, MDs.
Thank you, thank you very much. And just real quick, Dr. Bloom, if you wanted to respond to any of that at all or not?
I just want to respond by saying that I, I appreciate the points of view. I appreciate the concern. There are many points of view which are based on rumors, which are based on different areas of science in our day and age now with Twitter and with social media, and then also based on personal belief and cultural belief. That's why public health is difficult. So what Dr. Tuttle was saying regarding a number of these different areas is that, you know, there are problems with masking, there are, he has problems with masking and problems with vaccination, and, and a number of tried and true and proven and safe public health measures to battle infectious disease, and we're talking about public health measures in general. So I appreciate his, his personal points of view, and this is part of the conversation that we want to have with people regarding hesitancy, because there is a lot of disinformation out there, and then there is science. And science is what we are basing our approach to keep our residents safe on. Science is always what is leading our charge and what is driving the way that we are approaching this pandemic. We are listening to the experts. We are constantly engaged with the federal government and with the State Department of Public Health, who has always been here and exists, exists to protect the population and to protect you. And it is based on science and based on studies through a scientific process. And so that is why we are doing what we are doing, and this is what public health is. This is why we do what we do, to try to protect you and to help you and to engage with you with your concerns. We are not an organization here to tell you what to do. We are here to partner with you and to help you lead a good life and to stay healthy. That, that is, that is why I'm here. That is what we do. And that is all that I would like to say about that, and I appreciate all of the comments.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bloom. We have another hand up, Jessica S. And, oops, I'm so sorry. I may have just muted you. No, there you are.
I think, I think I got it. All right. Hi, my name's Jessica Snell. I am a new resident in Lake County, and I just kind of wanted to get involved with the city council a little bit and share my thoughts and opinions on, on the vaccine and masking and everything. And as much as, you know, we all have our separate opinions and things that we believe, like I really believe that we all just want to see, you know, the common good and, and for everyone to be healthy and well, and I respect everyone's opinions and, you know, as much as I want to believe science, I, I mostly hear what's going on is statistics rather than the science behind it. And, you know, I've, I've been a pro-masker, pro-vaccinator for my whole life up until last year because, you know, the, what is, what has been happening in our country has been very apparent, and as, as Will was talking about, the Big Pharma and the pharmaceutical companies that, that place these orders in line for people as, as a positive thing, but we've seen, you know, the epidemic of, of pain pills and the deaths and addiction rates of those. And to say that we should fully put 100% trust into the guidelines being set in place is, you know, I, I believe that everyone should have their own right and their own choice, and that a lot of this is, is a means of separation and, and status. You know, as someone else was saying, you know, there, the poverty rates and those vaccination rates are very, very low. Meanwhile, the higher percentage, like, are very privileged to, to have the opportunity to be vaccinated or not. And, and when it all boils down to it, it really is a personal choice. And I think what most people who, who may not want to get the vaccine are trying to get across is that we kind of don't want to be alienated to not enjoying our lives and having that freedom to go outside and, and be unmasked and, and, you know, have to show a card to get into a music festival or something like that. It just seems like we're going back in time to those days of, of mass separation and anxieties and, and, you know, I don't, I don't want it to boil down to losing friends or family over these things, but I've had experience with these vaccinations. I've witnessed it firsthand, it making people very, very ill. And, you know, as much as I want to believe the statistics and, and science behind it, I, I have to go with my gut feeling and what I've seen with my own two eyes in this world and this country and when what's been happening the past year and a half. And it's just the things that I've experienced alone has just, it's kind of opened my eyes. You know, at first I was really preaching to everyone, wear their masks and sanitize and, and, you know, stay safe out there, but after living in Los Angeles for a year and not getting COVID even once, and, you know, staying very safe, of course, but I just, I've learned a lot over the past year and a half on, on how, how things are run and, and who is running the country. And as much as I, like I said, I want to believe in the statistics and the science and the news behind it all, like I really have to go with my gut feeling. I just, I just want to see less separation and more empathy towards everyone and, and everyone just being healthy, you know, generally. And, and, and hopefully we can all come to a common ground to, to find a way that we can all feel comfortable and free and, and willing to, to work together to kind of just make a common end to, to all of this, really. So that's, that's really all I have to say. I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm not a doctor. I don't have any status suture for that, but I, I am well-educated and I have done my research for many years, and, and I rest assured in that. So thank you, and thank you guys for being here and sharing your thoughts as well.
All right. Thank you very much. And there is no further comments. There is a repeat, but we're behind schedule, so we're going to go ahead and continue moving forward. Any further comments from the board? Supervisor Pyska?
So I do appreciate the dialogue and the comments today, and, you know, it's important for us to recognize we are in this good place because of science and because of all the work that's happened over the year. And it is a choice to have a vaccine, and we, we're not, no one is forced to do that. It's your choice in this country. But as Dr. Bloom mentioned, there are other places around the world where people are suffering, and they don't have that choice and that privilege right now. And I think it's just an important time for us to recognize that.
Thank you for the comment. Any further comments before we go ahead and close this item? All right, Dr. Bloom, thank you very much to you and your staff. And tomorrow being the last day, I do want to appreciate the fact that your clinics that have been set up over the course of the last few months have been outstanding and have been absolutely helpful in getting our populations vaccinated and helping to decrease the burden of this unfortunate pandemic that still continues. So thank you so much to your staff and your team, and hoping that rest is coming soon.
Thank you very much. The team has been absolutely tireless and fantastic, and I wanted to express my thanks as well, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and move on to item 6.3, 9:30 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Designated the Week of May 9th through 15th, 2021, as Law Enforcement Officers Week. And this is sponsored by the sheriff, and if the sheriff doesn't mind, I've gone, passed it on to Supervisor Pyska to read. And this is sponsored by the sheriff. And if the sheriff doesn't mind, I've gone, passed it on to Supervisor Pyska to read. But I'm sure that he will have comments.
The Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Designating the Week of May 9th through the 15th, 2021 as Law Enforcement Officers Week. Whereas from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives and property of our citizens and the operation of, and the operation of correctional and detention facilities housing millions of prisoners and detainees throughout the nation. And whereas through constant application of new procedures and techniques, such officers are becoming more efficient in their law, in their enforcement of our laws and ensuring safety, containment, and control of human beings charged to their care while sustaining uncompromised regard for their dignity and constitutional rights. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of their law enforcement agencies and the necessity for cooperating with them in maintaining law and order. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the extraordinary risks and sacrifices the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face as they safeguard our freedom and security and the public from the criminals in their custody, while at the same time encouraging such prisoners to develop skills and attitudes that can help them become productive members of a society after their release. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all of our people. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake, formally designates the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021 as Law Enforcement Officers Week in Lake County and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Passed and adopted this 11th day of May, 2021.
I'd just like to add that your entire law enforcement staff and everybody that works in the jail has gone above and beyond this year during the pandemic and everything needed to keep themselves safe, our community safe, everybody in the jail safe. And I'm just really, really grateful. And I learned earlier from Sheriff Martin that correctional officers week was last week, but in Lake County, they're considered law enforcement. So I wanted to also give a shout out for the correctional officers.
Definitely. Thank you. Sam put a wireless microphone on me. That might have been a mistake. He's gonna have to catch me now.
Make sure you take that off before you leave.
Yeah, no kidding. I woke up this morning to news that two officers have been shot in San Luis Obispo, from San Luis Obispo Police Department. I started my civilian law enforcement career in the county of San Luis Obispo. One of them died, the other one was injured, and the suspect was killed in the shootout. So a, not a good way to start the, the day and not a good start for Law Enforcement Appreciation Week here in the state. This job has been historically tough, you know, in, in good times, when times were, you know, historically, this has always been a challenging job. It's got long grueling hours. Half the people, when you get called somewhere, don't want you there. People are not always appreciative when law enforcement shows up. And as of late, with the, the high profile shootings that go on, with the calls for police reform, it's an even more challenging time. And I think it's going to continue to be so as years go on. Over the past 10 years, on average, 163 law enforcement officers die every year in the line of duty. That's from car accidents, from shooting deaths, from on-the-job injuries. There's a whole variety of reasons. And on average, there's over 50,000 assaults every year on law enforcement officers in this country. Despite these numbers, there's still a demand for, for this job. People still flock to this. For a lot of people, it's a calling and, and it's a way for people to serve their community. In Lake County, we don't experience a lot of those negative issues with our law enforcement. And a lot of that has to do with, we are the community that we serve. Our deputies work here, for the most part, most of them live in, in Lake County. They raise their families here. They have children here. They see people that they take enforcement action against. They see people that they help on a daily basis, whether it's in the grocery store, at children's sporting events, at school. And I think that really fosters a sense of community. People may not like what we do, but we strive to treat them with dignity and respect. And even if they don't like what they're doing, in a lot of cases, they still respect us because we've treated them respectfully. We call this home. So this goes out whether you're wearing tan, tan and green, blue, whether you're a police officer, a game warden, a highway patrolman, probation officer, deputy sheriff, as Supervisor Pyska said. A couple of years ago, we reclassified our correctional officers to deputy sheriff corrections. And we intentionally include them in law enforcement week. We don't want them to feel like they're separate. They're, they're peace officers, just like the patrol deputies on the street. And their, their commitment, their service is every bit as important and, and every bit the same as the patrol deputy. So we do that intentionally. We don't, we don't, it's not something, it wasn't oversight. We want to make sure that as one agency, we're, we're the sheriff's office. We're not the jail and the sheriff's office. We're not, we're not separate. We're, we're together. And there was some, it was an intentional gesture to do that. With that, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and thank this community. They treat our law enforcement well and in, in exchange, our law enforcement likes to treat this community well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comment from the board before we move on to our next presentation? All right. Thank you for reading that supervisor and thank you sheriff for bringing that to our attention. Next one is 6.4, our 9:38, 5 a.m. item. Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Period of May 1st through June 14th, 2021 as National Military Appreciation Month in Lake County. And while I did sponsor this item and we're trying to make sure it's the correct one this time, I still would like Supervisor Crandall, as he is a veteran, to read that for us. And if you would like to come up, since this is absolutely because of you. So thank you for bringing this to us.
In fact, last week she reminded me that this, this is what we were, we were going to be reading. But we'll, we'll be doing it now. And so this proclamation is designating the month of May, 2021, as Military Appreciation Month. Whereas the freedom and security that citizens of the United States enjoy today are the direct results of the sacrifice and continued vigilance by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. And whereas members of the United States Armed Forces and the family members who support them have preserved the liberties that enriched this nation, making it unique in the world community. Whereas in 2004, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling all Americans to remember those who have given their lives in defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of our armed services who have served and continue to serve our country. And whereas the months of May and June were selected for the display of patriotism because during these months, we celebrate victory in Europe, D-Day, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day and Week, which is this week as well. National Day of Prayer, Memorial Day, Navy Day, Army Day and Flag Day, which are on the same day. And that's the last day of this proclamation, June 14th. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the month of May, 2021 as Military Appreciation Month in Lake County and calls upon all residents to show their gratitude and appreciation for our military personnel by the appropriate display of flags and ribbons. Passed and adopted this 11th day of May, 2021.
As a retired peace officer, I want to thank the county for recognizing peace officer in law enforcement for the hard job they do. And also thank you, Brian, not just for your work in law enforcement, but for your service. I know you're a veteran. Thank you for your service. And EJ, thank you. And to your husband as well, I believe. He's a veteran, correct?
Actually, he's non-military, but I have a son that's a veteran.
Okay. Well, thank you to your son. And thank you for this. I do appreciate the proclamation for Operation Tango Mike. Don't, don't think I don't, because I do. And our volunteers are appreciative. It was shared on social media and a, a lot of, thank you for the recognition to, from our volunteers. And thank you for this. I will have copies made and one will go in every care package this month. I anticipate care packages going to 12 countries. That's always in flux up to the night of packing and at least three ships. So this appreciation will be shared across the world. And it's nice for people to see that Lake County appreciates our military. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's fitting as well as the weeks correlate because when we do the packages, a lot of the sheriff's deputies and law enforcement are there helping with those packages. Most of them have served or understand service. So it's just, just wanted to mention that.
Thank you for that.
You know, I would just like to remind the community that we're still trying to update our wall of honor that we hear, that we have here at the courthouse. So if you have an active military family member, please send a five-by-seven picture to me here at the courthouse, Supervisor Tina Scott, with their rank and what military they're in and what date they went in. And we'll make sure that their picture gets put up in the wall of honor so everybody in the community can, can see them.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one simple request. Since the proclamation is going to go in the care packages that are going over there, is there an opportunity for all five of us to sign on that letter? The proclamation, just, I, I put that out there as a, just a request.
I will, I think we should ask staff to create that so that we can get that signed if possible before the end of the day so that we make sure that we can get it to Ginny Cravens so that she can put it in her care packages? Okay. That's a good idea. Appreciate that.
And do we know how many active military we actually have here in Lake County that are?
Do you want to release that information?
How many care packages are you going to be sending out?
I anticipate probably 75, but again, that's in flux. I do need to deploy and need to come home. But sometimes right up to the night of packing. It's not uncommon to have a family member walk in and hand me an address and say, can you add my son and my cousin? And we, of course, we do that. Probably 75. And Mark, Mark, our 80th anniversary, we've done 23,000 care packages, which is a real testament to this community.
And for those who were not able to hear, because Ms. Craven is not on the microphone, she was stating maybe about 70 to 75 packages this month would be going out and that she has done over 23,000 care packages during her time at Tango Mike. And really appreciate the, the, what was it? The paying it forward that I said you lead by example with the idea of helping those sometimes that you've never met. And, and that, that is, that is something we should all be looking up to. So thank you so much for leading by example. And please anticipate an updated letter with all of our signatures on that. I believe from looking at Susan over here, that she's, she's working on that. Thank you so much and great idea. Any further comments before we move on? All right. Let's go ahead and move on to item 6.5, our 9:40 a.m. item. Consideration of Presentation from Lake County Behavioral Health Services Staff on National Prevention Week, May 9th through 15th, 2021. Activities as well as highlight the work done year-round to support prevention of behavioral health challenges and needs in our community. Director Metcalfe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually going to turn this over to our Mental Health Services Act Team Leader, Carrie Manning, who's much better versed in this than I am. So Carrie, I see her on, take it away.
So good morning. I'm going to share my screen so that I can show you the amazing presentation that me and my staff worked on. Just let me find the right one. Oh, I think I got them backwards. Let me try that again. Sorry.
No worries at all.
Okay, there we go. Got it right. Good morning, everybody. My name is Carrie Manning and I am the image, as I say, Team Lead for Lake County Behavioral Health Services Department. I supervise the four peer support centers and our prevention team. Today's presentation is in celebration of National Prevention Week, which is May 9th through the 15th. And let's see. It is a public education platform that promotes prevention year-round through providing ideas, capacity building, tools and resources to help individuals and communities make substance use prevention happen every day. National Prevention Week culminates in May, recognizing the important work that has been done in communities throughout the year to inspire action and prevent substance use and mental health disorders. And prevention is defined as the action of stopping something from happening or arising. And our vision statement is to improve the quality of life for the people of Lake County experiencing mental health illness or substance use disorders by offering recovery-oriented services. And I'd like to recognize a team that assists our department in improving the quality of life for our communities. We have our prevention specialists, Kendra Boyce and Michael Moss. They have provided both substance use prevention and mental health awareness, suicide prevention services to the entire county. And our peer support center teams are David Abels, Edgar Ontiveros, Anna Tena, Jorge Morales, Melissa Farrell, Tony Delane, Thomas Brown and Patricia Santa Cruz. And we have a new staff starting Elizabeth Arnold next week. They are always willing to help their fellow community members during COVID. They have assisted with Project Room Key and the vaccination clinics. And they have also assisted in the pit count, the point in time count. And their determination and desire to have a positive impact on the community is very appreciated by everyone at LCVHS, at Lake County Behavioral Health Services. And this, based on Robert Wood Johnson Health Rankings, Lake County ranks 58th out of 58 counties in the state of California. For just our department to start to create change in our community would almost be impossible if we tried to do it alone. And so these are just a few of the wonderful community agencies that we have partnered with. And some of the community events that we participate in. And I know I haven't gotten everybody on here. This is just a screenshot of what we do. And we're lucky to not be in this alone. Because by pooling our resources together and sharing ideas and data, we can effectively provide the services to more of our community. And so our youth substance abuse prevention program mainly involves education in the schoolroom. For the middle schools, we use Project Alert. It is an evidence-based program. And, you know, it helps our youth to understand the consequences of using drugs, develop reasons not to, understand the benefits of being drug-free and also recognizing that most people don't use drugs. And we also, you know, help to increase their self-esteem, which, you know, limits the use. And then for the high schools, we use the Truth About Drugs. It is also an evidence-based program. And they do the same things. There's 14 truths about drugs. They go over the most commonly used. And again, you know, they, they educate on the effects. They educate on how to say no. And also again, that most people are not using, which is, you know, a myth that a lot of our youth believe is that, well, everybody's doing it. When in all actuality, they are not. We also have the Partnership for Success, state grant for opioid misuse and abuse prevention. And that has involved classroom education, parent education, school and community events. We collaborate with Lake County SafeRx. And then also we are going to be beginning implementation of the OD map, which will allow agencies to see where overdoses may be spiking in the community so that we can provide extra outreach and services to those communities. And then this year, our Partners in Opioid Prevention Summit will be on June 16th. And this year, we're really excited. We're going to have And this year, we're really excited, we're going to have Tony Hoffman be the key presenter. And he will be sharing his experiences with opiates and how he overcame his addiction from opiates and homelessness to coaching in the Olympics. The summit is open to all of Lake and surrounding counties, and I'd really encourage everybody that can attend. There will be a registration link on our website and also on our Facebook groups and And so in the prevention services, peer support workers are people who have been successful in their recovery process, who help others experiencing similar situations. Through shared understanding, respect and mutual empowerment, peer support workers help people become and stay engaged in the recovery process and reduce the likelihood of relapse. And peer support services can effectively extend the reach of treatment beyond the clinical setting into the everyday environment of those seeking a successful sustained recovery process. Our peer support centers are like the entry into many different services in the community. These are some of the groups and services that we offer. There's a survival cooking class where we actually teach people how to make meals with what they get from the food banks and different distributions. We have support groups in Spanish and English. We offer parent groups. We've had a youth-led peer support group, talking circles, life skills, art groups. Art really brings people together. Other things that they offer are advocating for people that are utilizing our services. They are wealth of information on resources and how to link people to the services that they might need. And then, you know, they also offer self-help groups and other groups to help improve their lives. So, the Big Oak Center is located in Clear Lake Oaks, and you'll see, here's some pictures. We do do the shower trailer there and food giveaways. The primary focus of the center is severely mentally ill community members as well as those that are unhoused. David Abels is the lead at the Big Oak Center, and he has worked hard collaborating with numerous agencies in the community. You know, he wants to make sure that every person that enters that building walks out with a smile and a need met. And he does a great job at that. There will be a Mental Health Matters Month event at the Big Oak Center on May eighteenth from ten AM to noon. And that is also the day that we partner with Adventist Health for the pop-up care shower event. And the pop-up care and shower takes place on Tuesdays from eleven to three. There are other agencies there that can help people apply for services that they might need with housing or health insurance. And we have the Circle of Native Minds, which is located in Lakeport. And I forgot to mention, I wanted to mention that we've served, in nineteen twenty, I should say, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, we served four hundred and twenty unique community members, and we provided over twenty-seven thousand services to those community members. And that could be, you know, referrals to different agencies, food, clothing, shower, whatever they needed. And considering that there's only, you know, there's limited staff at the centers, that's amazing, and also that we had COVID, that was a factor in providing services during that time period. So the Circle of Native Minds is located in Lakeport. Thomas Brown is the lead staff, and he provides outreach services to the Native American community by visiting the reservations, sharing the history of the pomo culture to promote healing. Patricia Santa Cruz is also working there. And the center provides a variety of groups and support services, and it is open to everyone in the community. And, you know, Thomas does provide different cultural activities as well at the center and outside of the center. And there will be an event to celebrate Mental Health Matters Month on May fourteenth from ten AM to noon. And all of these dates and times are on our Facebook groups and I believe our website. And then we have the Family Support Center, and Thomas served one hundred and eighty-nine unique community members and provided over seventy-eight hundred services to the community. Family Support Center is located in Middletown. Their main goal is to help parents that could be struggling with their children, grandparents raising children, aunts, uncles, anybody raising, you know, kids, and helping them, guide them through the system as well as improving their mental wellness. And it's, so in February of twenty twenty is when we opened, and then March of twenty twenty is when we shut down. So they, they've had some struggles. I'd like to encourage all the community to contact Melissa. If you're interested in the Parent Cafe or any of the other groups that we are doing, they also have a learning hub there. And we are working with Lake Helping Hand to provide a food distribution site as well as Adventist Health to provide the shower trailer and pop-up care event. And they will be having several activities over the month. The main one being on, um, May twenty-first from twelve to three will be the main Mental Health Matters event. But check out their Facebook group. They have some great activities planned each week. Then we have La Voz, and Melissa and that center served sixty-three unique community members and provided a hundred and thirty-three services. And La Voz is our Spanish-speaking Latinx community center, also open to everyone in the community. They do have the food giveaway there monthly, as well as they are working with Lake Adventist Health to provide a shower trailer pop-up care there as well. And we recently moved the center. It is at one four zero nine two Lake Shore Drive in Clear Lake. They also do some art groups, Latina support groups. They have Spanish AA meetings there, I think three to four days a week. And Edgar and his team, you know, work very hard at providing services for the Spanish-speaking population as well as, as other people in the community. And they provided services to six hundred and forty-eight individuals and provided them with over forty-six thousand services. The Harbor on Main is our Transitional Age Youth Center. We contract with Redwood Community Services so that we can provide youth with a safe place to go. They can do homework there, get help with that. They have free resources, clothing, hygiene products, computer, life skill groups. I know that they've helped kids find jobs. It, it's an amazing center. I went in there the other day, they've got pool tables and just, it's just a very friendly environment. And they served one hundred and seventy-four unique community members and provided over thirteen thousand services and twelve hundred visits. I encourage everybody to check out all of the Facebook groups and to see what they're doing at their centers. So then we also have our Suicide Prevention and Awareness Education Programs. I'm almost done. "Mental health and well-being are fundamental to our collective and individual ability as humans to think, emote, interact with each other and earn a living and enjoy life." That is from the World Health Organization. And the Suicide Prevention and Awareness Coalition, we are currently working with Each Mind Matters on implementing the Striving for Zero campaign, which is a suicide prevention program to reduce completed suicides and provide education to the community. Part of this campaign will be to reestablish the Life is Sacred Alliance Suicide Prevention Awareness Coalition. All community members are invited to participate. Please contact myself, Kendra Boyce, or Michael Moss, whose our contact information will be coming up for more information. Lake County is ranked the highest per capita in completed suicides. And, you know, our goal is to reduce that and, you know, strive for zero. And we have some really good programs that work towards that goal. First, we have our Mental Health First Aid Training for people who work with adults, with youth. And then we also have the exciting teen program, which we started to implement right before the shelter in place happened and are currently, you know, working on bringing that back to the schools. That is a program that teaches youth how to support each other. And the main goal is teaching them that it is okay to not be okay, and how to seek help for themselves or their friends. And then we also offer the adult and the youth Mental Health First Aid that teaches us the same, you know, how to talk to others about suicide and that, you know, it's not the S-word. And how important it is to be able to ask someone those important questions, how to respond to them, and how to get them some help. And then we also have two shorter courses that are Know the Signs and Question, Persuade, and Refer. These are both great trainings, just kind of like an entry level, you know, how to talk to someone, what are the warning signs, what do you do if you, you know, see the warning signs, how do you approach that person? So please look on our Lake County Behavioral Health Services website or the Lake County Prevention Facebook page for links to all of these trainings. If you or an organization would want a training for a group of people, please contact one of us and we will get that set up. And during the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, we had a hundred and fifty-four people that were trained in one of those programs. And we would like to see that increase even more. And ninety-one of those were school-aged children or youth between the ages of sixteen to twenty-five. We do offer the QPR training and Know the Signs to our youth as well as the Teen Mental Health First Aid Program. And in conclusion, this is our contact information. And then, you know, just some quick, if you are experiencing some mental health challenges or just need somebody to talk to, you can call the, any one of these numbers. There's also a text line, seven four one, seven four one. Just text HELP and someone will contact you back. So I tested that number out because I was like, oh my gosh, texting, and they do respond very quickly. So with that, I am going to stop sharing my screen, and I'm done, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I just want to make sure and reopen it up for Director Metcalfe in case he has anything to add before we go to the supervisors.
No, actually, that's a tough act to follow. I know that was a lot of information. We tried to keep it under fifteen minutes, but just wanting to share because this is Mental Health Awareness Month and this is Prevention Week, we thought it would be timely to share, you know, some of the programs and services that, that we offer. You know, when I took over this position a little over four years ago, I didn't realize that we did so much. And so I thought it was time to have staff share what we're doing at our peer support centers and all of the other things we're doing around prevention on multiple fronts in our department. So I appreciate your time and thank you for, and thank you, Carrie, for the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Scott?
Just want to thank Carrie for her presentation and bringing this awareness to our community. Behavioral Health does some amazing work, and so thank you for sharing all the programs that you have there. And also just to highlight the, the classes that you talked about, they're free to the community to sign up. So you, you never will know when you can use that information to help a family member or a community member. I've actually taken the class and it was just good information to have. So I, I encourage everybody to sign up and take one of those classes.
Thank you very much for the comments. Any other comments? Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, thank you for the presentation and just wanted to state that I appreciate seeing the different variations of services and support services for different ethnicities and whatnot, but we all do get addicted the same, we all respond the same to these, well, you know, if we're addicted, we, we respond to the, the substance the same, but we all end up in very similar situations. We have family that's affected by these type of things. And it's, it's very imperative that we ensure to prevent suicide and all of the other measures that you put forward, and so I just wanted to thank you again.
I did have a question, and I'm not sure if that would be Carrie or Todd that would be able to respond. Seeing the numbers of services and unique individuals that are helped by each, each facility, I see that La Voz has a very large, unique member count and services. How far-reaching is La Voz? I know it's in Clear Lake, and obviously there's quite the population that surrounds it, but do they see community members from throughout the lake? Or is there a need in the future to look at possibly duplicating that service somewhere else in Lake County? Because I know that there's very large pockets of Latinx, pop, community members in the Kelsey Vale area and other places as well. Just want to make sure that they have that level of access to this facility.
Thank you. I, I know that they are very busy, and, you know, I think it's because they have been here in Clear Lake since we started the peer support centers. And, you know, there is a need elsewhere in the county. Patricia Santa Cruz at the Circle of Native Minds is a Spanish, is Spanish-speaking. She is Latinx from that community. And so, you know, we're, we're trying to increase the reach by having bilingual staff at the different centers. And we are also in the midst of a very exciting project. Our outreach van is going to hit the streets hopefully, hopefully within the next couple of months. We still have some work to do, and the staff that are going to be on the outreach van, our outreach is primarily going to be to the homeless community and youth that are unhoused. But we, we're, we're there for the whole community and, you know, staff from the different peer support centers and our prevention specialists will be on the van. And we'll be able to, you know, if needed, transport them to a medical appointment or the emergency room or to La Voz or one of the other centers. I, I feel like, you know, while there is that great need throughout the whole community, I, I, I think that we are reaching, you know, that, the Hispanic, Spanish-speaking population by being able to connect with La Voz and having Spanish speakers at the different sites.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that update. I, I think that obviously the, you know better than I do, behavioral health is becoming more and more an important conversation we're having, not just as a nation, but in the state as well. Even as we slowly see ourselves out of the pandemic right now, there's still many goals being set to enhance behavioral health services in our communities. The conversation that's- The conversation that's happening nationally with law enforcement has a lot to do with behavioral health opportunities as well. By closing some of our facilities in the past has put that burden on top of our law enforcement. How do we retackle that situation to bring a better balance in our communities? So I think that we're going to see a bigger summary in the upcoming years versus what you're proposing today and offering today. And so I look forward to what those changes are because I know that the state is not done providing some funding to make those things happen in our community and I look forward to implementing those.
Right. And I forgot to mention that we are working with the sheriff's department and the local police departments on providing the adult mental health first aid training to as many of their staff as we can.
Thank you for adding that. Supervisor Pyska?
I just want to applaud your innovation and going out and developing all these programs and creating the opportunities for cultural access and now with the mobility van. Mental health is really about the whole person care and you're doing an excellent job and I really applaud everybody in your department and all of the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any further comment before I, Supervisor Simon?
You know, obviously, to speak, you know, follow right along with the rest of the board, just the great work that's being done. But I do have one question and what we've learned, obviously, and I know it's increased in this time is Zoom appointments and other things. I know that sometimes the outreach, we have the phone numbers here and other things, but in the future, will there be an opportunity for folks to do Zoom intervention lines and other stuff like that? So I just, I have that question going forward with what we've learned during this pandemic that, you know, it helps not only just to be talking, but sometimes seeing a face and seeing those emotions and understanding somebody. So I just wonder, it's great, everything we have here, but if that is something being considered by you guys.
Well, we have actually already, I think all of our peer support centers are doing some type of Facebook room group daily. I know at the Big Oak Peer Support Center, he has been doing coffee chat every morning at nine o'clock. I think we have some issues with Facebook right now, but hopefully we're going to get those resolved so that we can start that again. And then they have the Parent Cafe. So we are utilizing, you know, Zoom as well as Facebook rooms to be able to provide that virtual support. And then currently we are installing smart boards at each one of our centers so that we can provide even more virtual support and we can move into a hybrid model. You know, for those people who feel more comfortable, you know, watching on Zoom or taking, participating in a Facebook group or, you know, just being able to have that one-on-one, at least face contact with somebody, you know, if not in person. So I have to really applaud our staff because, you know, a lot of our staff haven't been using computers and so they've had to really learn how to integrate the virtual services in with the in-person style of providing services. And they've done an amazing job.
And just to add to that, we are, we've been having conversations at the management level in our department with, you know, restrictions, COVID-19 restrictions being, you know, loosened up, that we are, we're trying to address how we can get back to more in-person services. So we're absolutely having those conversations because I feel like during the pandemic, although I've said that, you know, maybe some of our no-show rates went down because it was easier for folks to engage via telehealth, I'm sure we've been missing folks that weren't able to access, you know, via internet or even cellphone. And so yes, we're absolutely taking, you know, taking a cautious approach to getting back to more in-person services.
Well, you know, I guess my comment is always, everything we've learned, you know, just having every option because everyone is different in how they're going to approach it. So going forward, that even as the things lifted or unrestricted, that we keep that other option out there because that might be the one lifeline that gives someone an opportunity. So that's just my only comment.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, this has been a game changer and if we can do both, as Carrie mentioned, you know, this hybrid model, I think we'll have even more success in reaching more folks.
Thank you very much. If there's no further comment, let's go ahead and open it up to the public for any comments or questions. I see none here in the boardroom. If you're in the Zoom room, please press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand or dial star nine if you are in via telephone. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back and thank you for your presentation today and updating us as well as the public on all the services that are available through behavioral health and keep up the good work.
And thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you. And we have more services than this, so stay tuned.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it is 10:57 a.m. Our next item is an hour behind. It was supposed to be at 10 a.m., but we are going to take a 10-minute break and so we will come back at 11:07 and get started on our 10 a.m. item. All right, everyone, welcome back. It is 11:08 a.m. We are going to take on our 6.6 item, 10 a.m. Discussion and Consideration of Board Action in Response to a Gate on a Public Roadway. And with that, I will pause. Okay, so Supervisor Crandall will be recusing himself. Not sure if anyone heard. I wasn't sure if your microphone was on, but it's now known. So we'll call you when we're done.
All right.
Thank you. And I am going to open up this item with our county council. Ms. Grant, if you can please present this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me tell you, please, that I've provided you with a very brief memo. The memo gives you two citations to the Streets and Highways Code as well as a brief recitation of the history. The item is before you as a simple agenda item. It is an agenda item whereby you may discuss and consider whether you wish to take further action in regard to the existence of a gate on Foothills Oak Drive in Upper Lake, California. Your board had previously taken action in 2015. I think it's important for everyone to understand what this particular item is not. This is not a public hearing. This is not an administrative hearing. This is, your board is not sitting in a quasi-judicial capacity in any way. You are not going to hear legal arguments and admit evidence. You're not creating an administrative record. This is a standard agenda item where you are considering one issue, whether you wish to engage in any further response to the existence of a gate on Foothills Oak Drive, which is a public road, though not maintained by the county. The consideration of this item then is to consider those further steps, if any, you wish to take. You are not making any determinations as to whether and to what extent you have any legally cognizable mandatory duties here. You are looking at the issue under the two statutes that I've provided as to whether you wish to take further action as to this gate on this particular road. I am aware that there are counsel who are going to be on the call and I'm asking them very clearly that they respect those limitations, given that there is pending litigation on this matter, because it would be inappropriate to introduce that here where, again, your board is not sitting quasi-judicially. So again, people may be submitting things to you. That's not evidence submitted. It doesn't thereby create an administrative record. You get comments and additional documents all the time when there's an agenda item. This is no different. Had it been in any other capacity, it would have had to have been properly noticed and clearly and unequivocally designated as such. It is not and that is purposeful. So with that, I can tell you that, again, your board had taken prior action. Nothing, no further action has been taken for a number of years. Gates are not allowed on county highways, except gates that are allowed by your board in connection with 966 of the Streets and Highways Code. I've cited that for you under those circumstances where you may allow for those things. The allowance of a gate on a county road is not a new process. It has been going on for some time. Your board can determine whether under, and under what circumstances you wish to allow a gate or if you don't wish to allow a gate at all. Your board need not take any action today. You can listen to public comment. Again, it is a simple agenda item. Your board may take action if you wish to or you may simply discuss it. It's on as discussion and consideration, so the options remain open to you. Again, just not in a quasi-judicial capacity.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation and introduction. All public comments will remain at a maximum of three minutes, so please be succinct when speaking. And I do want to ask the board if there are any questions or comments before we do open it up for the public. Okay, so I think we all want to hear what the public has to say and I believe that we have Chairman Cromwell and you have your hand up, so let's go ahead and begin with you. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the boards and supervisors. Grateful for that. I am Chairman Benaykem Cromwell, representing Robinson Rancheria located in Nice, between Nice and Upper Lake. And today I just wanted to talk about how this gate being closed has helped our area. It's not that throughway that allows notorious or devious activities to go through there, but we still are struggling with some things back there, whether people are dumping garbage on our land, having drug use because of that roadway. We have ATVs and motorcycles going over our fences and around our fences, which causes us in concern because they might actually have, here's a few photos of things that have been in our land. But we don't want to fire and we don't want any back, you know, we don't want any exhaust or any fumes or anything to be lit up there because that, again, that would be a liability on our tribe. So we want to protect our roads and our lands and one of these, and this gate here and safety gate has been doing such that we do provide everyone with a key so that it is not closed forever, including our fire department and our sheriff department. So nobody's complained about this being up except for one community member. This community member has access to Highway 20, unrestricted access to Highway 20 from his driveway. And this road and this gate is way beyond his, it's not next to his driveway. And so we feel like this gate being up is a safety concern for our community and all the landowners and the property owners around it. We've talked to them all. We want to give them an opportunity to find a way where we could work together to make sure that we're all on the same page for community safety. This road with the gate open is just a floodway to go from Pile Road.
I'm on a board meeting.
So just wanted to say that this has been a community issue. It has been closed. It has helped us somewhat mitigate the desecration of our land and the people that want to do nefarious activities on it. So we're just in favor of hoping that we can keep this gate locked, but we will provide a means to make sure that everyone has a way to open it that has access to it. And so I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. I see we have Brian Momson?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm an attorney in Ukiah. I represent Gary Sabaloni, who's a neighbor to the north of the Robinson Rancheria facility. I won't get into how this isn't a judicial hearing or whether it is or not. I just, in my brief time, I'll just make some factual points. First of all, this gate is a public roadway and it, the roadway was accepted for public dedication at the same time Mr. Sabaloni and his parents back in the eighties received an approved subdivision from the county. And the road approval as being public was part of that process. So even though Mr. Sabaloni is just his family there now, there could be as many as 10 houses that have already been approved as part of a subdivision on his property. And locking a gate over a public roadway, even if a key is provided, which he hasn't received one yet, would be a danger in a case of wildfire, which has been a big problem for this county. And I believe the county has even involved in a suit in Guanac subdivision over lack of emergency exits and so forth. So I also don't see how putting up a gate in the middle of a road prevents people from dumping anything, as we saw in those pictures. People can still drive to either side of this gate to do that. And lastly, a key is not a good solution for someone would still have to get out, maybe in bad weather or in a fire emergency and unlock the gate. We don't think the gate should be there at all. It should be either removed or you should stick by the 2015 board's resolution that the gate must be kept open. But if it is going to remain, we would at least suggest that there be like a key code where someone doesn't have to exit their vehicle and just punches in a code and that that be controlled by the county, not the Robinson tribe. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We submitted a bunch of documents and, you know, I don't necessarily mean to tie this to the lawsuit, but the suit did have a bunch of factual, Mr. Sabaloni's version of the facts and a bunch of attachments. I also submitted an aerial photo and some correspondence, so I'd ask that that at least be considered. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Boland.
My name's Little Fon Boland and I'm here in my capacity as general counsel representing the Robinson Rancheria. First, I just wanted to point out that Mr. Sabaloni doesn't dispute the board's broad discretion under Section 966 to erect and maintain gates and to allow others to erect and maintain gates. They, or can make a decision at any time in the best interest of the community to permit locked gates on public roadways. And there's nothing impermissible about the board granting the request from the tribe. Nor does Mr. Sabaloni dispute that prior to acquiring this land, this gate was actually already there. It was put up by local neighbors, not the tribe. It's the tribe who recently repaired it and gave it a locking mechanism. They absolutely reached out to Mr. Sabaloni and offered him a key. He refused to accept the key. So I would like to note, there's been multiple letters, efforts to cooperate and work with Mr. Sabaloni. It's also telling that not a single neighbor has objected to this locked mechanism, nor have safety personnel. The only person who has raised any concerns is Mr. Sabaloni. His objections are frankly theoretical inconveniences. He has, I'm showing on the map here, he has the absolute capability to drive on Pomo Way to get to his parcel. It's the easiest parcel to travel through. He does not need to take the circuitous route to go all the way around, but he's actually inconvenienced himself to make a point. Likewise, he has mentioned that in all of his different communications that this is a safety issue. In fact, the only escape route he says he has is if we were, he needs, he needs to have the gate removed to have a safe escape route. Again, the quickest and most immediate route to travel west, or east for that matter, from the Sabaloni residence is via State Highway 20. In any type of emergency, the shortest, quickest, and most immediate way for Mr. Sabaloni In any type of emergency, the shortest, quickest, and most immediate way for Mr. Sabaloni is to get to State Highway twenty through Palma Way. Again, we're not limiting his access. He has unfettered access to his parcel. He's just choosing not to accept this gate. I wanted to reiterate that in weighing the harms between leaving the gate open during, let's say, daylight hours, or leaving it open all the time compared to the tribe, it it just simply weighs in the favor of the tribe. Again, as Mr., the Chairman Cromwell said, they have four hundred of five hundred acres of unmonitored land for people to trespass on, and this gate has had a measurable mitigation effect. It's impossible for them to monitor all of this land. They are very concerned about a fire in that area because of the people going up with ATVs, motorcycles, et cetera, and it's a true liability for the tribe. They are certainly willing to work with the county, but it's very important that whatever solution is selected or considered, that it's a workable solution, and we believe the locked gate would be a solution. Finally, I just wanted to point out that there are dance grounds of cultural significance in that area. People are driving over those grounds, it's desecrating the tribe's land, and it has major cultural significance. And there's also a lot of erosion going on in the area and garbage dumping. So with that, I will leave this with the board, but I'd just like to reiterate that the harms to Mr. Sabaloni are, at this point, theoretical in nature. He has not actually sought to subdivide his parcel, and the harms to the tribe are very real and need to be mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we can close down the shared screen?
Yes.
That way I can see the rest of the room. Thank you so much. Any other public comment on this item? Please raise your hand if you have a comment. The icon is at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or if you phoned in, dial star nine. And I see nobody in the room here, and it looks like the only hand I see right now is Brian Momson, and that will be a repeat. So just if I'm going to do one repeat, just to let everyone who's already spoken, you have that chance as well. I just want to make sure that everyone is heard. So Brian Momson, let's go ahead and give you another chance to speak.
Thank you. I'll be quick. Just very briefly, as you can see from their aerial, which was better than the one I submitted, the gate's well up the road from Highway twenty, so it's still accessible from Highway twenty from either side. So it's not preventing any member of the public from getting to the tribe's property or getting to a location on the road where they can dump garbage or do whatever they want. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just doing one final call for a public comment before we bring this back to the board, and I see Ms. Boland has her hand up.
If we're allowed to repeat, I'd like to just make one other point.
Yes.
What the tribe is requesting is that the gate be locked at all times to help restrict vehicle traffic on Foothills Oak Drive between Upper Lake Lucerne Road and Palma Way. The tribe accepts responsibility for maintaining the community safety gate and including the lock-in keys. They're proposing that each landowner with property of budding Foothills Oak Drive between the terminal roads and, as well as safety personnel, shall have a key to the lock for the safety gate, that no person would be provided with a key for the gate. Excuse me, any person who's provided a key would make a commitment that they would not make copies, and that the Board of Supervisors and the tribe shall maintain a written list of each person that the key is issued to. And so we're very much willing to work with the county. If the county wants to be in the driver's seat with regard to the keys or the locking mechanisms, monitoring that locking mechanism, the list with the keys, whatever's necessary to cooperate, we are willing to do that, but we just need a solution that does thwart the access of the public to this land. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see that Chairman Cromwell also has his hand up.
I just wanted to say thank you to the board for allowing us, me, to speak today, and that we are willing to work for a workable solution for everyone that's in this area. So just wanted to say thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you're done with with the other public comments, you might want to see if Public Works Director Scott DeLeon has anything he'd like to add.
Okay. And I see that Director DeLeon is here with us. Do you have anything to add to this discussion, since Public Works has everything to do with roads?
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you for asking me to join the discussion. I I don't really have any additional information. As it was pointed out earlier, this road was dedicated for public use. However, it is not within the county maintained system. I, I would ask that, you know, there's been some discussion about the county being involved in in monitoring who uses the gate or having some some participation with the gate, and I would want a lot of additional detail on that before Public Works is going to commit to doing anything there. We don't have any maintenance responsibility on that road presently, and and so I just I'm a little cautious about that, but I don't have any other additional, any additional comments. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So let's go ahead and close our public comment portion of this item and bring it back to the board for further discussion. Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, I have a few questions. It sounds like we're getting kind of differing opinions. So does the gate block access to the tribal land?
If it's possible for Ms. Boland or Chairman Cromwell to respond to that?
I would defer to Chairman Cromwell on that.
The gate that we are discussing does not, it's only blocking Foothill Oaks Drive. It is not blocking to get to Robinson land.
And does the gate keep people from dumping out there?
If if you're coming from Upper Lake Lucerne Road, because you want to get to, you know, land that you can hide and throw stuff away, that gate will stop you right there, right? Really close to Upper Lake Lucerne Road to stop you. If you wanted to come behind the casino to to think that you can go up into the hills and to the mountains, we have another gate at Mountainside Road to stop. So there's a, there's a three gates right there. People still go across our our dance grounds to to do what they want to do nefariously, but but those are a really good stoppage for people who have ideas that they think there's no, there's access that go anywhere. But that does stop on on Foothill Oaks Drive on both sides. If people think they could do a drive-through, drop off and drive-through, because you can't. You're gonna have to turn back around, and we have cameras on our casino parking lot to make sure we could see anything like that.
So you can't drive around the gate? You can't access around the gate?
No, but they are driving around the gate. They are desecrating our our fences, as well as our dance grounds, to go around it and go up hills. So we do see that constantly.
And then my other comment is just that if the land was developed into a subdivision, then there would be activity there, there would be people living there, construction, and I don't think that you would have the same issues.
Any further comments or questions? Supervisor Simon?
We have someone on it. All right.
Now, let's go ahead.
Yeah. You know, I appreciate all the information. I know this has been an ongoing issue here, but my question would be, it sounds like we have somewhat a compromise, I think, that could be reached. So my my question would be, is there any opportunity to, if we're going to consider leaving the gate, an opportunity to have it electrified? So whether it's solar or any electric out there, so that people would have clickers? So then you could, you could have it locked, but no one would have to get out to open the gate or anything like that. I heard it talked about, well, I don't want to get out there in hot weather or any other emergency opportunities. I know for access in that manner, see a lot of that done out here on the ranches and stuff, that they have solar gate opportunities, where they can have a punch code or or something like that. So and ultimately, that would be, I'm asking this time Chairman, if that would be something that the tribe would be willing to compromise on and give an opportunity. I know we were talking about keys and tracking those, but I myself see that as a challenge from the county, accepting that. It would be more tribal responsibility and working with its surrounding neighbors, and I know we're here because we have one at least a dozen, so I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, the tribe is willing definitely to any workable solution for all of our neighbors that are on Foothill Oaks Drive. It is, again, those who don't live there that we're trying to, you know, to keep out. So there's no, I mean, that's what we're here for, to have that conversation. I mean, that conversation is not a problem from our side, because we have maintained that gate. That lock has been broken many times. That gate has been bent, and we still fix it every time. So we're not asking, we'll maintain it, but if there's a compromise that way, we're willing to to have a solution that works for everybody.
Maybe a clicker would be better than a keypad, which you could give out the code to anybody.
Yeah, that, you know, my, that was my thought also, you know, instead of the keypad, because anybody can give that. But if you know which homes have the clicker and you have an opportunity, there are a way, there are programs out there, I think, that you could see who is using what system and who who used it. So I just put that out there as a compromise on both sides. Understand, obviously, we live here in Lake County. Obviously, ingress egress is always very important. Want to make that as smooth as possible. In the midst of a firestorm, getting out and unlocking a gate is always a challenge. And then ultimately, for entrance of our first responders also, making sure that the, you know, if something's going on out there, that the sheriff and also the fire department have easy access, and I know they have those access boxes on most of the the gates that are that are put up. I know, you know, we have at least one that we work with Caltrans that has that opportunity for easy entrance for our first responders. So I just put that out as a suggestion for the board to consider.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
I would definitely agree with a compromise. It's definitely necessary to keep that gate up. We we see this all over our communities, areas that that people dump in, because they can get in too easily and and not be seen. So I think we need to be working with the tribe and the property owners to try to make sure we maintain that, if it, whatever, whatever direction we need to go, I think we need, we need to do that. And I agree with Supervisor Pyska that if they did subdivide, and there was a bunch of homes back there, we probably wouldn't have this issue. And maybe if, you know, down the road that happens, then maybe bring it back, and we can, you know, revisit this option.
Ms. Grant, looks like you have something to say.
Just as you're beginning your discussion of what your board may or may not want to do today, let me tell you that you can certainly employ whatever means you like. You can also have triggers in your permission that say, should X event occur, that the matter does have to be revisited by your board to determine what's appropriate under those circumstances, or by Department of Public Works first, and if there's a resolution is is unable to be achieved, then to your board. But there are options that that you can do today to decide, again, do you want the gate always locked, open during daylight? Do you want it closed on weekends? All of these things are going to be up to you. I think that you're talking about first responders, which is critically important for law enforcement and fire personnel, and if you feel that a clicker mechanism is the the most advantageous for everyone, and and most critically, the only way you'll allow the gate to be maintained, then then that's certainly up to you. Again, you determine the circumstances here. You you stated you want to make sure you're fair to all parties, and so compromise is generally the way to achieve that.
So I I will provide my opinion on this matter. So this is a public road, and I know it's a public road that's not maintained, which to me, in my mind, that's already part of the problem. By by allowing ourselves to take in roads that we claim aren't going to be maintained, we're pretty much saying, go ahead and do that type of activity there, because we're not doing any activity on that road. And so that 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 leaves a lot of bad potential for things to happen. I hope that in the future, we'll start looking at making that change, because I really think that will help us. On the other side, it's a public road, and there's a gate, and that doesn't make sense to me, that that still qualifies as a public road, because that seems more like a private road. And if it's not going to be our gate and it's someone else's gate, now it seems to even fall more on the side of it's a private road and not a public road. It just, I I'm getting very confused as to who is looking to change our road, and how is that still being seen as a public road? And we're seeing pictures that that gate's not really doing the job that it's looking to do. There's still dumping going on. We saw pictures just today. So I I would say we need to up our game a little bit and take on the responsibility, because this is not a unique scenario. This this is throughout our entire county. We have places like this, where people are just desecrating our 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 properties, our land, our beautiful scenery, and by putting a gate, obviously, from the pictures, it doesn't prohibit those things from happening. I think we have to take a a stronger approach. I know that there is some conversations, they're not done yet, happening in our Waste Management Committee, about upgrading our legal dumping strategy and ordinances, and part of that is possibly setting up cameras and really catching people who are illegally dumping. There's some perfect plans that are shown to us from Alameda, from Butte County, that we can utilize in order to decrease that. We have a culture in our county that it is perfectly fine to go throw away whatever you want, anywhere you want, and that is, that is something we have to attack in a very confronting way, not in indirect way, but in a very direct approach. And a gate is not a very direct approach. It's 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 a hope that this will fix it, and it doesn't make sense when you can access that gate from one side of Foothill and access the other side of Foothill, and you would actually meet each other just on both sides of the gate, which means that it's not prohibiting anyone from going through, other than maybe you have to be seen by more people if you take a certain route, when you're, maybe you have a truck full of garbage. I want to stop the garbage dumping, and then if that stopped, maybe there wouldn't be a requirement to have a gate on this road. I just, I I don't feel comfortable with saying yes to a gate on a public road, or else, well, how is that a public road? If the public itself doesn't get to use that, doesn't have a clicker, doesn't have a code, whatever it is that we choose, it just seems to take away from the fact that it's a public road. So I I'm, I'm more on the approach of, we need to solve our countywide problem where this is happening. This is not a Robinson Rancheria problem. This is not a Mr. Sabaloni problem. This is a Lake County problem, where there's a lot of areas, areas where it's out of sight, out of mind, and people seem to think it's perfectly fine to do these things, and we need to figure out how to stop that. And I don't want to see gates popping up everywhere, where all of a sudden, we're restricting access to our beautiful county in order to solve a problem that maybe we should be able to solve in a much more direct way. So that that's, that's my position on that. I'd love to hear how others feel about gates on a public road, and where do we stop if we say yes to this one, to are we going to have more gates on other areas? Supervisor Pyska?
And that, that is one thing that I've been thinking about all weekend, too, is what sort of precedent does this set for the rest of our county and for the rest of our rural roads? What, but we have a solution that is sort of working right now. There's one neighbor that doesn't like it, but what is the solution? If we're not going to allow this gate, then what do we do? And we can, it's not something that we can put off and say, eventually, we're going to figure out. You know, we, I don't feel like we can say no to this gate without having another option to say yes to.
And and this is why I was alluding to what the Waste Solid And, and this is why I was alluding to what the waste, solid waste management task force is discussing because that would be a perfect place to start once that is finalized, which I'm hoping within the next month or so it will be finalized. And I agree, we need to have some sort of solution because there's a problem. It's whether or not the gate is to remain and help solve the problem or if the problem will persist and the gate is just an additional thing that doesn't actually provide a solution to the original problem. I, I think, and, and my personal opinion is at what point do we take responsibility for the public road? And if we are going to claim it's a public road, then we need to take that responsibility, not pass it on to Robinson Rancheria, not pass it on to someone else. That, that's where we, we need to look at changing that. Supervisor Simon?
I agree with Supervisor Pyska about, you know, an opportunity now. I appreciate your lofty goals of we're going to stop people from dumping in Lake County, but those are pretty lofty goals. I'm not sure what ordinance you're going to put in place that stops dumping in Lake County. We've talked about this before about passing ordinances and other things that are unenforceable because we won't have a task force that's out there in the middle of the night and let's just take, this is one road. As we all know, we have roads that are notorious all over the county. There's not going to be someone out there at two in the morning for an illegal dumping off the end of Dry Creek Road that is four and a half miles back there. I mean, I appreciate your lofty goals, but it seems like what we're talking about today is this one gate instance, as I understand, and Anita can correct me if I'm wrong, if it was to come up, this really wouldn't be setting precedents. I think each and every time it would have to come to the board. If there is an opportunity, maybe I'm wrong on that or if someone is challenging it, we would be looking at them individually. So the precedent setting would be hey, let's get a compromise in a community that can help in a positive way in the conversation today. So I just want to clarify on that, on the gates, we make the decision. That was very clear in all the information we got today. This board or any board in the future would make that decision. It wouldn't just open any floodgates for this to happen.
Correct. We're not making a, a policy decision that everything else is going to be, be taken in the same way. This is on a specific subject and each one would be taken individually. Ms. Grant, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you. Just, just again, the, I wanted to also point out that nine six six of the Street and Highways Code does provide that the, the person for whose immediate benefit the gates are erected or maintained shall in all cases bear the expense of erection and maintenance. So that's written into the Streets and Highways Code. I think that's why you're hearing it today. It's not an abdication of your responsibility. It's just part of what state law requires. So that is why it's there. I can also say that, you know, your decision with regard to this gate is your, your board takes these up and considers each circumstance and each circumstance may be different. Normally you, you look at any type of public road as not having, generally having an obstruction, but there are reasons why a gate can be erected on the road, on a road, and the Streets and Highways Code recognizes that very clearly. Sometimes a, a solution presents a partial solution. In other words, it may stop some illegal dumping. I doubt there's anything that's going to prevent all illegal dumping. Everywhere I go, there's someone who spends more time figuring out a way to sneak out and dump something than actually just taking it to the transfer station. So that's not a problem that you can solve today. However, in recognition of that as a goal for your board, you can limit the extent of your permission. And you can, again, as I said, you can address the issue of public access requiring the gate be open during daylight hours if you wish to. You can determine to, to allow it to remain under certain circumstances and look at it again in a few months to see if your solution is addressing what you wanted it to. All of these things are available to you, so you don't have to etch anything in stone and walk away. Your board can attempt something here and if it doesn't work, come back to the drawing board if you like. All of the choices, as I've noted in the memo to your board, it exists for you. But again, time limit may be one of them. If you want to look to see how it works and bring it back in a year or as I said, triggers as to if development is, is imminent through pulling of permits, et cetera, et cetera, your board can determine to revisit the issue at that time. There are a lot of ways that you can do this. There's nothing in the law that says once you make a decision, it shall forever be so.
Thank you very much. Is that a pen up?
Yeah, but I think she was up first.
Supervisor Scott?
You know, Supervisor Sabatia, I fully understand your goal of wanting to stop dumping. I don't think that's, I think that's on the plate of every supervisor that, that sits here. We're tired of it and we want to solve that issue. And I know you brought up the fact that, you know, this is a county issue and we need to solve this. But all the meetings that I've sat in, when there's collaboration and groups working together and not silos, that's when we make solutions. So here we have a partner willing to partner with us to try to help saw it or minimize the issue of dumping on this road. So I think we need to be working with this partner to see what we can do together to at least minimize the dumping on, on this road. And maybe the ideas that you're talking about also go forth and, and do that also. But I think we need to be taking steps as we move forward to, to solve this issue we have here in the county.
I, I agree with that. We do have an option here and if we say no to this option and there's no option, then, you know, then the problem's going to get worse potentially. So I think we have the opportunity to collaborate on what's going to work and it could, you know, I think that we need to have triggers for if there's development, if permits are pulled. And, you know, if we do develop another, a plan, you know, with surveillance or something else that, that might be more effective, we could try that out. You know, we could, we could have a pilot program there. We could open the gate and see how that works for a period of time. And we have that option available to us now because we don't, we don't have those programs in our hand to offer the, the neighborhood up here that's having these difficulties.
Okay. And if you're ready for action or further conversation?
I'm going to see if we can frame something to share. So I would like to make a motion that we do allow the gate to stay, but I, I would like to include in that motion that it is going to be either provided power or solar with the clickers for the community and also for public safety access and, and opportunity for a review for the next couple of years, for at least every six months, just a simple check in and see where we're at and how things are working. So I don't know what that would look like. I know that's a lot of talking for a motion, but you know, I, that, I, I would offer that as a compromise at this point, especially hearing that the individual, the tribal nation put the getup would be willing to work with us on that collaboration. So that, that's my motion.
Ms., I'm sorry.
I, I would just like to add a trigger if permits are pulled for development.
Okay. And I, that was in our correspondence that it was in there too, so I completely agree.
Ms. Grant?
Yes, just for point of clarification, six month review by whom? By your board, by the road superintendent, by, do you want that to be by you?
Yeah, we made the decision, so it should be us, yes.
And when you say for the community, you're talking about the neighboring properties along Foothills Oak Drive?
Yes.
Access properties?
Yes.
Access properties.
And, and I would like to, so the, there's a motion on the floor. We're continuing discussion based on the motion. I know that Director De Leon was slightly concerned about how much staff time would be involved with keeping a list, keeping track of who's got a clicker. Do we want to ask Robinson Rancheria to take on that lead for us in that motion?
Yes, that is the intention of, of the motion that I bring today, that it would be, fall on the tribal government to do that portion and reporting back.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Simon. Hopefully somebody took notes of the details. And I have a second from Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Hi.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let's go ahead and see if we can get Supervisor Crandall back here. Thank you. And our next item will be our 10:30 a.m. item.
He's coming.
Thank you very much. And so item 6.7, 10:30 a.m., presentation of 2021 drought preparedness Clear Lake. And Director De Leon, I'll let you take this one over.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. Staff has put together a number of, of pieces of information and I'll, I should have asked for this before, but it looks like I can share my screen. So I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and do that. I apologize, you kind of snuck up on me here.
No worries at all.
Okay. There we go.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So again, staff has put together a short presentation and I'd like to share that with you. And then we have some additional, some, one additional slide I think that I'll share with you. And, and you know, this is the first of a couple of items we're going to talk about today related to the drought. And I'll just jump into the slide presentation and, and please feel free to stop me if you have questions. This next slide shows our current water year precipitation. The two slides we, we borrowed from a different region or different sources. And you can see the story behind both of them, that we are extremely low or below average or normal precipitation. Here are some of our historical, let me move this, some of our historical precipitations around Lake County. The, the average for the Upper Cache Creek Basin, which is basically Lake County is 37.45. We took some, some years around a previous drought, previous drought experiences, 75, 76, or 76, 77. You can see that we had two back to back years of significantly low rainfall compared to the average. We also had a, a little drought in 2014 and that is the last time your board made a declaration of drought emergency. And you can see the rainfall from that year. And then the last two winters, you can see the rainfall that we had. So 2021 certainly approached the rainfall amounts from the 76, 77 drought. Again, kind of comparing it to those specific years, 77, 2014, again, the average of 37. And that just kind of summarizes the previous slide. Also, Lake County or Clear Lake, Lake levels for those particular years, the 77 is a little challenging to see, but you'll note that you can see the graph of, of the, the lake level here got down to a little over three, negative three, three and a half roughly in 77. 2014, we got, you know, below, not quite to negative one. And whoops, sorry about that. And then this current water year, you can see where we dropped. And, you know, today we're sitting at about point seven, I believe. We have some predictions and I'll share those with you here in just a second. We, we took a look at some of our groundwater levels using wells that we monitor. Some of these are monitored on a monthly basis as part of our CASGIM program, which is a groundwater reporting program through the state. And we've got a couple of, you can see this is one of the wells that we're, we tested and its location. And we'll just kind of go through this, this slide here on the right. This kind of purple line with the, with the X's on it is the springtime average. These wells or this particular well is likely a well that we, we evaluate in April and then again in October, which gives us the two, the spring average and the fall average. So this purple line here is the average of the readings that we have in, typically in April. And you'll notice that this year is approximately five feet, a little over five feet below the average groundwater level for that particular well in the springtime. Another well, this one is very near to, to Kelsey Creek. Same, same type of information. Here's your springtime average. This blue line is a plot of the, the spring, the spring readings. And again, we're, we're a little bit below the, the average. I think one of the things that's, that's helping that is you'll notice right below it are the fall average readings. And, and so we were, we were much higher in our fall readings above average over the last couple of years, which is likely helping minimize the amount that we're below the spring average. This is a plot of the Clear Lake levels and I'm going to have to keep moving my, let me get that out of here. The, the current stage is, is this gray line here. The dotted line is the stage, these dots here are the stage from 1977. And then this solid blue line is a plot of the lake level from 2014. Again, focusing on the last two times that we had significant drought conditions. And then this is a prediction for, for this year. It, it's a little difficult to see between, but when you compare the solid blue line and this dotted blue line from the different years, 2014, the lake dropped at, at a rate that was much quicker than 2000, or I'm sorry, 1977. So what we've done is we've kind of corrected the predicted level based on the rates that we saw in 77 and the rate that we saw in 2014. And that gives us these green and black dots and the predicted elevation of the lake at the end of the summer here, this would be the first weekend in November. And we're predicting that it's going to be somewhere in the negative 1.78 to negative two. So somewhere around negative two Rumsay is the anticipated level. This yellow dot is using a theoretical, a theoretical value or a theoretical equation. a theoretical value or a theoretical equation. This is just another graph of the previous slide. This is some interesting information that staff put together. It is our public boat ramps. And what we did is we went out and using as-built information from plans, going to the ramp themselves and, and actually trying to measure down to the end of the ramp. We, we determined the approximate depth of the end of the boat ramp of a number of our public ramps. And so those are shown in this column here, the method that we use to establish, establish that elevation. And what's likely gonna be the recommendation, some of these are actually already closed. And these will be our recommendations for, for these ramps getting through the summer. And these are some of the resources that we used for, for our slides. And I'll stop sharing. And actually, what I wanted to do was bring one more slide over. And let me share that.
While, while you're doing that, I have a question for you. In your previous slide, the yellow dotted line, which went all the way down to about negative four Rumsay, is that like a worst case scenario? How, how did that come to be? I didn't quite understand. The others were kind of using other trends from nineteen seventy seven and two thousand fourteen. What made the, the yellow dotted line?
So that was using an equation. And it takes into account evaporation, temperature trends, different things, it's a very complicated calculation. And it, well, it didn't really follow the historical trends. And, and so I, I think, you know, while it's a useful tool in, in helping determine or estimate where, where the, the lake may end up going. I thought it was important to include the historical trend, which was shown in seventy seven and, and two thousand and fourteen. And so that would certainly be worst case scenario. But I think the historical trends are probably, probably a bit more reliable.
Okay, thank you.
This last screen, I, I hope you're seeing that, it says I'm sharing the screen, so I presume it's up. These, these are a series of wells in the Big Valley Basin. And these are the average water depths of each of those wells that we do in the spring. And you can see these were the readings from spring in nineteen seventy seven. These were the spring in two thousand fifteen. And these are spring of two thousand twenty one. These numbers down across the bottom are the average of all of these in that, you know, in that column. So you can see that on average, our wells are above the readings that we saw in, in the seventy six, seventy seven drought by roughly ten, eleven feet higher across the board. And they are a little bit below the spring levels from two thousand and fifteen. So.
Is it possible for you on the bottom right of your screen where it says hundred percent in a slider, to slide that a little bit bigger so that we can make sure that the public can see it?
You bet.
Because it is a little difficult to see. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. So again, these are the, the historical or monthly averages of these individual readings here. Again, these are all wells that are in the Big Valley Basin. And so spring is seventy seven, the average depth was this number. Spring of fifteen, the average depth of the water was this number. And again, this year, the average depth is, is, is between them. It's significantly higher than, than spring of seventy seven and a little bit lower than, than two thousand fifteen. So with that, we will continue to monitor our, our boat ramps. Again, some of the wells, some of the wells in the Big Valley Basin get, get checked on a monthly basis. Most of them are, are done in the springtime. But the ones that we monitor on a monthly basis will continue to do. And we'll continue as a department, we'll continue to respond to reports of obstructions or, or things in the lake as, as the lake level drops. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. I also have Marina Delajonis from our department, Deputy Director, is here. So if you have any specific questions related to perhaps groundwater basin or anything of that nature as it is related to the drought and is contained within this item, we'll be happy to try to answer.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. Any comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Crandall.
And you probably explained this during the, I think it's the Clear Lake Public Boat Ramps page on the screen. And where your recommendations are for opening or closing them. Just maybe for the public to understand, and if it's been explained, I apologize. Where it says depth at the end of the boat ramp, it says like minus five point three, for example, on Fifth Street Lakeport, below Rumsay, and it recommends that it's open and used in engineer's rod. However, in other areas, it's like one foot or two foot. Is it because of the structure or is there, is there a method to that that maybe you can explain so they can understand why some of them are recommended to be closed?
Nope, you're muted.
Thank you, sorry about that. Yeah, one of the things you'll note is those, those two ramps in, in Lakeport are some of your newer ramps are more, more currently constructed. And so some of the older ramps, some of the unimproved ramps, for example, Rodman Slough is an unimproved ramp. It's basically just folks have over time figured out how to get their, their boats and trailers down, down to the lake. So it's an unimproved ramp. A lot of these older ramps, the ends of the ramp are, are, are shallower. And so the, the depth at the end of the ramp is just a function of, of, you know, when the ramp was constructed. And and they, as you noted in this, in that slide, they all vary.
Thank you.
The, the other thing that I think is important to remember is though the ramp might be at minus three Rumsay, you still have to have enough water, you know, enough depth to be able to get the boat off of the trailer. So, you know, one of the things, even though the lake isn't gonna be at minus three runs, or we don't, we, we're not predicting that it's gonna be at minus three Rumsay. The lake still needs to be high enough to be able to float the, the boat off of the trailer. So some of these ramps, if, if they're shallow, they don't have a lot of slope to them. They, they may become inoperable as, you know, as the water levels continue to drop. And again, these are, these are things that we'll be monitoring as a department.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, are we going to? Supervisor Simon, go for it.
Just want to look at Director De Leon as we look forward, because, you know, appreciate the update and where we're going here. But with historical data, data that we have going all the way back to seventy six and, you know, most likely there's more. But when we go in the drought situation, so when we say drought preparedness for Lake County two thousand twenty one, we're looking at over the next fifty years for drought preparedness, because I know, and this is the way I look at it long term, this lake has been here for, so I'm saying a million years. It's going to go through, you know, obviously cycles. As we do that, we're droughting other things. And my question really comes from, we have more on your, your Clear Lake Public Boat Ramps that have been closed, we have more ramps that have been closed previously than are gonna be able to stay open if it's a worst case situation. So my thought is for the long-term opportunity for dredging, for improving the ramps, because we are sitting here as a board right now dealing with this. But boards in the future, is there an opportunity to look at a worst case scenario and what we would need to do to extend our ramps as climate change and other things are affecting us for our long-term solution? Even if there is the worst drought that we've ever been through coming down in the future, that we're prepared for that. Because we've heard earlier today some testimony about dredging and opportunities where we're losing revenue. We know the lake is what draws a lot of folks here for that long-term preparation. I know we're talking about the drought now, but what it would look like to look at those long infrastructure needs to improving all the ramps so they could stay open? Because this isn't the first time we've had a drought in Lake County. And not the worst yet, because seventy six had even lower numbers.
Well, you know, certainly planning for the future is, is something that we always need to be mindful of. You know, a little bit later in your agenda, you're gonna be considering a, a proclamation, declaring an emergency related to the drought. You know, when, when things like that happen, and especially when declarations are made at state levels, sometimes funding becomes available for, for other types of projects related to drought, related to drought preparedness and related to, you know, drought mitigation. So there, there may be an opportunity to, to do just what you're suggesting. And that is pursue some funding to look at these public ramps. And what types of projects could we do or what improvements would need to be done in order to, to make them so that they are closed during periods of drought and still provide access to the lake? Because we, we expect people to continue to come to the lake. You look at Folsom Lake, for example, in, in, in the Sacramento area. You know, we watch a lot of news shows where people are walking around and, and, and Lake Mendocino is, is largely, largely dry. So we're expecting a lot of folks coming here to Lake County. And, and so perhaps there's an opportunity to, to go after some, some drought-specific type funding and, and look at projects like that for the future.
Well, I appreciate that, that we're having the conversations today in the report. Because we look at it, you know, we're having the conversation all the time about, you know, even during disasters, you know, there's always opportunities to come out of it. And this maybe wanted to look at that long-term opportunity for economic development, as you said. As things are happening around, we know this lake has been here for a million years. We need to adapt to it, not try to make it adapt to us. And, and I just think that long-term planning is something we can't miss out on right now. So I just bring that up.
Thank you very much. And I know I was starting to say something, but I forgot what I was saying. But I appreciate the charts, I appreciate the data and information. I know that I was on a call where all the water purveyors also listened in and to check in to see how deep their pipes are in order to draw water out of the lake for drinking water purposes. And I also know that the Water Resources has just been advertising that close to sixty percent of our residents here draw water from the lake for drinking water, whether it's through a private company, mutual company, or public water district. It's different throughout the lake, but that's a large percentage of our population that relies heavily on the lake. And so definitely keeping a watchful eye to make sure that things can keep going smoothly. But it will be, as Supervisor Simon mentioned, we don't know how long this will be. And looking at what opportunities do we have? And I think some of those opportunities have already been discussed. And some of that could include planning toolies, again, to help rebuild the, the coastal area and working with the right people to make that happen. Let's go ahead, if there's no further comments, let's open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on this item? I see none in the room and we have Frank. Please go ahead and provide us with your full name when you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Frank Costner, I'm the General Manager of Conackdy County Water District in the city of Clear Lake.
Go for it, Frank.
I just wanted to say, you know, I'm the General Manager of this, of the Small Water District in, in the city of Clear Lake, Conackdy County Water District. We're experiencing the potential effects of the low lake at this, at this moment. As the lake gets lower, our pumps have a harder and harder time pumping from the lake into our treatment plant. And so I've applied for some emergency grant funding to actually help that, that, and also to get an emergency intertie with the Lower Lake Water District. Lower Lake is served with wells and we're a surface water treatment plant. So hopefully the, if we can get this emergency grant funding, we can get an emergency intertie with Lower Lake so that if the, if the, we're no, we're no longer able to pump water out of the lake, that we can supplement our water with, with the Lower Lake intertie. And so if, if the county supervisors do declare a drought or an emergency, that will help us, it will also help the messaging throughout the county. Will be a united front with all the other districts that have declared a water shortage emergency and help us get some grant funding, hopefully. Also, I just want to say that we have implemented our water conservation program. We do have a water conservation plan in place. Our Stage One is a twenty percent voluntary reduction in water usage. And then the Stage Two, which we'll probably be implementing later this summer, is a twenty five percent mandatory water reduction. And so I just want to thank you for your time and please consider declaring a water shortage emergency or drought. It would really help the water districts throughout the lake. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that will be in another item. And let's go ahead and finish this one first. If there's any further comments, please raise your hand. I'm seeing none again in the boardroom and none in the Zoom room. And let's go ahead and bring it back, any further comments or questions? All right, thank you so much for your presentation, very informative. Especially as we go on onto the next item. Our next item is eleven AM, items six point eight, proclamation of emergency declaration for drought conditions. And Sheriff Brian Martin is here with us to bring this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item comes on the heels of a May sixth proclamation that I issued declaring state emergency in Lake County due to drought conditions. That proclamation came after an April thirtieth meeting that I had with several stakeholders in our county, the County Administrative Officer, Director De Leon with the Water Resources Department, the Public Services Director, the Auditor Controller, and the Special District Administrator. What you saw today was a presentation, obviously it's been updated since that April thirtieth meeting, but that was the same presentation that, that we were shown at that time. At that time, at that point, we decided that it was probably appropriate to go forth with a proclamation and make sure that the timing was right. This is our second drought year with no apparent relief in sight. We, we anticipate further drought conditions, there's no good news in the immediate future for any relief from these, this weather. And what we're anticipating is that we're gonna have a very slow rolling emergency with this drought, with the impacts to be seen in, in various ways. We're already hearing some of them during the public comment on the previous item. And I think we're just gonna hear more and more as the drought continues. Yesterday, the governor expanded his April twenty first emergency proclamation. On April twenty first, he ratified proclamations in Sonoma County and Mendocino County related to the drought. And his, his, his expansion yesterday included thirty nine additional counties within California with Lake County being one of them. The extraordinarily warm temperatures in April and May separate this critically dry years from most other years in California record. A lot of the snowpack that we had in, in the Sierras melted very quickly and absorbed into the ground rather than flowing into the watersheds, the waterways in the Sacramento Feather and American River watersheds. And those waterways feed the major reservoirs in the Central Valley. And, and they're, they're feeling the impacts there as well. So what we're here today for is for the board to ratify a, my proclamation. And probably the question on everybody's mind is, so what does this mean, what's this going to do? As you heard one of the previous speakers, it opens up a lot of grant opportunities. It opens up awareness opportunities. The Office of Emergency Services is going to start a campaign with savewater.com, pushing notifications out and information sharing. notifications out and in information sharing to try to get that voluntary compliance that we need. I plan on convening meetings as early as Friday this week with some of our stakeholders with Water Resources, Public Services, Special Districts, city and tribal representatives, fire, fire officials, agriculture, cannabis industries. We'll invite everybody to the table. Hopefully, we can get as much representation at that meeting as possible and discuss strategies and suggestions and review chapter twenty-eight of Lake County Code to see what already exists in our in our ordinances to address some of these matters. Plan on reporting back to the Board of Supervisors next week and on an as needed basis and request that this agenda, if it's ratified, that the agenda item be continued on a regular basis as the other emergency proclamations do so we can keep on top of this and hopefully respond to what is probably going to be an inevitable, long, slow rolling emergency. Again, I would hope that our emphasis is on voluntary compliance, as Supervisor Simon pointed out, with every disaster, there comes opportunities. I don't want our actions as a government to be immediately jumped to punitive actions. We want to seek voluntary compliance and look for those opportunities to that we can reach out for those grant fundings and take advantage of things to maybe extend the ramps out. One thing that seems to be very common in in society today is equity equitable access to our public lake. For a lot of people that can't afford to live on the shores of of Clear Lake and have access to their own private boat docks and boat ramps, the only way they can get out there and enjoy the water that they're legally entitled to enjoy is by way of these public boat ramps. And if during drought years are going to be shut down to deny them access, this is a great opportunity to get those ramps extended so we can continue to provide that recreational opportunity for people. That would be good for our economy and it's good for people to be able to enjoy what the what they pay for with their tax dollars. We need to during our meetings, we need to discuss what the impact's going to be to households, to the business, to our ag crops, our livestock, recreation and tourism impacts, our municipal water supplies, our groundwater supplies. One thing that comes up is very near and dear to me is our emergency response. Already at Bredo's Marino over by Buckingham where we store our boats, it's getting too shallow for us to use the majority of our boat slips that we ran out there. This is particularly of concern during the North Bay Complex. We actually deployed our boat patrols to go and save people off off the shorelines of Clear Lake. And if if we're not able to access very quickly, hopefully, we never have to do that again. But but that may impact our abilities to provide those emergency services as well as the routine emergency services for stranded boaters, boating accidents, and people in need of assistance on the lake. We need to consider the impact that this is going to have to staff response costs with this. If the board does decide to ratify this, I'm sure you might hear from the Auditor Controller that we need to track our expenses so that we can be able to obtain any reimbursement that's available as a result of this. We also need to consider the impacts to our tribal lands. During previous droughts, we had we had people that took advantage of the receding water lines to try to exploit for their own personal gain, some of our cultural and historic resources in and around the lake and include the various tribes around the county in our discussions so we can meet their needs as well. In closing, I want to encourage the board to ratify this proclamation. And I also want to thank the various people that helped out with this. I can't name everybody, but already up until this point, I've had a lot of help from some of our our county executives, including the Water Resources Director, the C A O, the Public Services Director, the Special District Administrator. And again, I'm not intentionally leaving anybody out, but there's a lot of people that had a helping hand in in this as as of right now, and there's going to be a lot more that continue to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes.
Supervisor Pyska.
Um, thank you, Sheriff Martin. So just to be clear, this is the sort of the beginning of the conversation. It's not, these are triggering mandates or anything yet, but we're but this is the start.
The resolution that I proposed for for ratification today does include the ability for the Public Services Director, the Water Resource Director, or the sheriff to close boat ramps without further authority. As you see, we've already closed some of them down. I I think that by all by all means, we have the ability to do that when conditions aren't safe. But you're exactly right. This is the beginning of it. I intend for this to be an ongoing conversation. As things come up, there's no way to anticipate at this point all of the impacts. The only thing we can anticipate is that we're going to have impacts and we want to have a continuing and ongoing discussion so that we can focus our efforts where where we most need to in response to the ongoing emergency.
Great, thanks for that. Yeah, I was reached out to by water purveyors wondering, you know, does this mean we have to start finding people? And it that doesn't that's we're not there yet.
I would hope not. It's like, I don't want to, yeah, I don't want this to be punitive. We want to seek voluntary compliance. I think everybody understands the importance of it. And there's little things, as I said, our messaging campaign with savewater.com, we're going to be putting those messages out. I think it's a lot of stuff that people already know to be able to save water. They can certainly measure whether or not those efforts are are working by by measuring the amount of water that's getting used. And let's let's give that a try first before we start punishing people.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? I I would just like to add that, and it's been implied, but I just want to make sure it's verbally stated, nobody knows exactly when the weather will change. And so this may be this year, we may be starting today or as of Friday, but we don't know if this is going to be a twenty twenty-two drought, a twenty twenty-three drought. And so we need to think about the long term because we have no idea. So we definitely need to be mindful of that. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public for any questions or comments. Anybody in the boardroom have a question or comment? And if you're in the Zoom room, please press the raise hand icon on the bottom of your screen or dial star nine if you're calling via phone. All right, seeing none, let's bring it back to the board, either discussion or action.
I will offer the resolution proclaiming declaration of a local emergency due to drought conditions.
Is it a resolution?
Yes.
The resolution has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
I will offer the resolution proclaiming a local emergency and requesting the governor to make available state assistance funding and seek all available forms of federal disaster assistance and relief programs to include residential declaration of emergency.
Resolution has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of that item. Thank you, Sheriff, for bringing that to us. And it is twelve thirty P M. We have an item coming up later at one P M. And I was thinking right now would be an opportune moment to take a lunch and come back at one thirty? Or would you like to come back earlier at one fifteen? Preference? Okay, I'm going to say let's go ahead and come back at one thirty, give staff an hour to take lunch, and then we will reconvene at one thirty P M. Thank you for your patience for waiting for me when I was late. Welcome back, everybody. It is one thirty-one P M. We were going to start off with our six point nine item, but we're going to see if we can wait till a little bit later. And so let's see, let's go ahead and do item seven point two. Ms. Grant, would you be ready for that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so consideration of resolution adopting a continuous record retention and destructive schedule for the Office of County Council. Ms. Grant?
Uh, yes, thank you. Years ago, there was a previous resolution done that did allow some continuous destruction, but over the years, locating that resolution is a thing of my recollection. So to before we continue, I haven't let anything be destroyed because I couldn't locate it. And as you may imagine, attorney's offices deal with a great deal of paperwork, some of which is important, and to be frank, much of which is simply not. So this record retention schedule is designed to to address those things that must be permanently maintained, those things that can be destroyed after a period of years, with the caveat that if any records are of historical or cultural significance, those would be maintained. For example, my office maintains a great number of records that have to do with Clear Lake, its relationship with with Yolo, the Bemerly Decree, et cetera, and a lot of just the historical happenings. We keep those in a very safe location and we keep them all together so the county doesn't lose that historical reference. And there are certain other records of somewhat similar nature that we maintain. But for example, if you've done a thousand writs of habeas corpus and one is an exemplification of those issues, one need only retain one, not the other nine hundred and ninety-nine. Also, we have very little in the way of storage space. So that's why I put this request in front of your board via a resolution. The attachment is the type of record. Not every kind of record we deal with is included here, so those would not be subject to this determination, only the specific records that your board finds here. And obviously, you can make any adjustments or changes or simply say no. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation on that. Any questions or comments from board members? So I do have a question. Number one, you say there already was a resolution, but right now it's only in memory rather than something in front of us. Do we need to maybe put in here that any previous resolution similar to this resolution is now gone and replaced? Do we need to maybe add any language to that, just in case it does pop back up one day?
We can certainly this normally as a matter of course, this would supersede, but it's always good a good idea to make those things that are commonly understood expressly written. So I think that's a very good idea that this resolution supersedes any prior resolutions that were adopted before it.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I also don't see any difference between what would be a physical document and a digital document because I'm guessing that we might be reaching, some of them are two years that you're holding on to, some of them with seven and ten years, that we might be reaching the lifespan of some of that. Are we also cleaning out digital?
We haven't begun that process. That's why I'm not asking your board for that now, just the things that are very old with these timeframes, though certainly digitally, some of that can happen. But we are, we're attempting to sort that out and work it work it out in a way that we can maintain a library of drives that would be able to be loaded unless Shane has a better idea. And when it comes to computers, he would almost certainly have a better one than I.
Okay, and I would take it that by the lack of defining physical or digital within this resolution, that this resolution will fulfill would fulfill the ability to clean out both of the above based on the dates that are provided in Exhibit A, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so that expires my questions. Any further comments or questions from board members before we open it up for the public? And let's go ahead and open it up for public comment on item seven point two, I believe. Seeing none in the boardroom. And in the Zoom room, please press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or star nine if you're calling in via telephone. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for either this further discussion or action.
Mr. Chair, I will offer the resolution with the suggested addition or amendment.
Okay, the resolution has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Let's go ahead and let me see if if Director Metcalf is available. I see he's still here. Just want to make sure he has the ability to chime in if we open up his items that were pulled.
Yes, Director Metcalf is here.
All right, in the third person and everything.
I'm we're in the middle of a Mental Health Services Act audit, so I had to just jump out of that, so.
All right, well, let's make it happen. Thank you so much for being here. So we pulled item, let's go back over this, five point three. And so let's begin with item five point three. Waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Section Code thirty-eight point two as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services and B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Manzanita House for adult residential support services and specialty mental health services for fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two for a contract maximum of one hundred sixty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. The reason that I pulled this item and the other items of similar traits is the waiving of the formal bidding. I did speak with Director Metcalf, who has stated to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that in the four and a half years that he has been the director, he does not believe that we have gone out to bid for these services, but also does vouch that these are special services and have the potential to be seen as such and then waived the formal bidding process because of that. I I made a turn in our last week's meeting and I want to continue in moving in that direction myself. That doesn't mean that's the board's case, and I will be bringing back policy soon, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, to review our waiving of bidding process. But I just wanted to pull this item because I believe this needs to go through an R F P process to ensure that when we're spending one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars on a service, that we have made sure to get the absolute most efficient service, not just for the outcomes, but also for the funds required to pay for such service. I will let Director Metcalf add anything that he wishes before we open it up for conversation.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I I agree with you, what you're saying about the bidding process, but I would like maybe to collectively address all four agenda consent agenda items that that you pulled, five point three, five point four, five point five, and five point seven, because they're all they're all pretty much the same thing. Chair Sabatier, I did reference County Code Section three eight point two that I believe these contracts would fall under the category of quote special services contracts unquote that are not subject to the competitive bidding process. All of these contracts are with long term care facilities in which we have clients who have been living for many years and 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 to have them have to move them would not be in the best interest of our client's health and well being. And although I I agree that, yes, these should go out to bid, I'm requesting that the board approve these this fiscal year and we look at this next fiscal year. If we have to go out to bid for these contracts now, we're already up at the end of our at the end of the fiscal year, these contracts would then expire and then these folks, and I'm sorry, I don't have a number, I should have a number, but I don't, the number of folks that are in these facilities would end up being unhoused. And that's not what we're all about here at Behavior Health Services. So I'm 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 asking that the board go ahead and approve these and we look at a bidding process next fiscal year. I I also have, I believe, our administrative deputy director, Elise Jones, is here with me. She oversees all the contract operations in our department as well as, you know, our conserve clients with some of these folks are in these facilities. And I don't know if she might want to add something to this. I see you're here, Elise. Do you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Director. So I just want to clarify that these items are addressing facilities that exist within Lake County. I see Manzanita House, Clover Valley, and then Davis, well, Davis Guest House would I think be the exclusion, but as the board likely knows, there are very limited resources for this population existing within the county as well as the state. So these are the only ones that exist within our county. And obviously, whenever we can, we want to place people within our county for a number of reasons. Outside of our county, just in general, it's important to note that we compete for beds with the rest of the state. And so these facilities with whom we contract And so these facilities with whom we contract for specialty mental health care and patient services are the only ones that exist within our region. It doesn't seem prudent to expand our search beyond, you know, the Bay Area, going further south, for a number of logistical reasons, as well as client care. So certainly, we would welcome any facility, any entity that might want to open a facility in Lake County to do so, that would be a very welcome addition. Thank you.
Thanks, Elise.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Scott?
You know, I'm incredibly happy to hear that the majority of these facilities are here in Lake County, because I know that is our goal, to keep our, our people home where they have family and they, you know, this is their home. So I'm happy to hear that, and definitely believe that should be the number one focus, is keeping people in their community. Thank you.
And I will add to that directly. I think that if there is a local option, that that should get some extra room for when we do another bidding later on, maybe adding another extra year comparison to other potential bids that we receive. But I still feel that as the holder of the purse strings of public funds, that we need to ensure that we are getting the best bang for our buck. And if we say we don't want to go bid, I see that as a potential for an issue of being, having to overspend where they know that we're not going out to bid. And so I don't want that to be the, I don't want that to be the, the message that we're sending out to anyone. We don't want to move people around if we don't have to, but at the same time, I think it's our due diligence to ensure that if, if there's a very large saving, or there's a better option for better outcomes somewhere else, that we need to look into that every once in a while. And because I said no last week to some, I can't today continue by saying yes, where now it doesn't make sense, where my logic or my, my original actions stand.
Mr. Chair, and I'm sorry, Director, if I may, just briefly, and I'm sorry, Supervisor Scott, I do see your hand up. And I'll just be quite honest, these facilities aren't, it is hard to get placements in these beds, just by way of the competition for the beds. And so even in a formal bidding process, they're not hurting for business. They don't, they don't, I mean, I don't want to say they don't, they wouldn't be hurt if we didn't have business with them, but they really probably wouldn't notice it. So we really have to go around and kind of beat the pavement to find these placements. And yet I completely appreciate, and we are very cognizant of the financial burden that this is, and are doing our due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott?
I just wanted to add too, I know these facilities, they cost a lot of money, but I believe that we also have to visit our clients, correct? So it would cost staff time and mileage if they had to leave our community to go visit their clients. I think we have to also take that into account, too.
Yes, that's correct, Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I think, completely agree, as you said, as we move through the contracting process, that we, you know, go back, I think everything can always be updated, but, you know, especially with behavioral health services and mental health services, familiarity, you know, folks have been in the place for a long time and things, you know, that is, that's a part of the treatment, you know, and looking at it from that standpoint, I, I myself look at it from a different, we're looking for services and contracts for engineers and for building bridges and stuff, you're dealing with something different. But when you're dealing with the human condition that needs this help, we need to consider that when we're bringing it back and trying to draft something new, because just as we've heard from Todd and his staff today, is, you know, this is, this is something that's real personal, keeping the family close, keeping them close to an environment that they understand is all part of that process, as they try and get healed or get help moving forward. So I agree with you, we need to do it, but we need to look at it from contractual services that are just building things and contracting, buying equipment compared to the human aspect. And as we do that, just want to make sure, well, I think we'll all speak up in that manner. So I'm good with moving forward today with these contracts as requested by Todd.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments before we open it up for the public? All right. We already have a hand up in the Zoom room. Let's see if we can get Betsy Khan unmuted.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Director, and I'm speaking to you as a member of the public who is very engaged with the Lake County Mental Health Advisory Board. And I am pleased to tell you, as a very critical member of the public, and I think everybody knows that, that I am seeing tremendous work being done by that board. One of their requirements under the Welfare and Institutions Code is to evaluate the efficiency and performance of these grants, the visa awards, and to ensure the actual performance of the care that Supervisor Simon just spoke so clearly about as a need. I think it's perfectly reasonable to, to question whether these things are being done properly, but I can tell you, you have a board that you created, your Mental Health Advisory Board, which is in the process of doing exactly that for you. And later on this year, we'll no doubt be giving you a report on how these things work in the County of Lake. It's been almost 10 years since we had an active, effective Mental Health Advisory Board, but you now have one, and I'm happy to say I'll do anything I can to help all of you with this. And Supervisor Simon, thank you so much. I've moved two tiers.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments on this item? See none in the chamber? And no more here on the Zoom room. Let's go ahead and bring it back for either further discussion or action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Section Code 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services, and B, approve the agreement between County of Lake and Manzanita House for adult residential supportive services and special mental health services for fiscal year 2021-22 for a contract maximum of $164,250, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, and a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Thank you.
And then let's open up 5.4. A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services, and B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Clover Valley Guest Home for adult residential support services and specialty mental health services for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 for a contract maximum of $60,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. I'm not going to say anything more, because every item was pulled for the same reason. And so I am done with introducing the item unless Director Metcalf has something to add on this one.
No, it would be the same. As I, as I said, I addressed each one of these agenda items the same. It's, it's all the same argument.
I have a question for Ms. Grant. Would it be possible to do a motion kind of like what we do for other consent items to, if there's a motion for the rest of the three?
No, that is when they remain consent items. Unfortunately, once you take them off consent, you have to take them up individually.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries. I had to check in, trying to find a shortcut when there's not. Any comments from supervisors? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any public comments on this item? And seeing none, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services, and B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Clover Valley Guest Home for adult residential support services and special mental health services for fiscal year 2021-22 for a contract maximum of $60,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Scott, and I'm going to give the second to Supervisor Crandall. And if we can get a roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Thank you.
And then opening up item 5.5, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to the Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services, and B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises Incorporated for adult residential support services and specialty mental health services for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 for a contract maximum of $110,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. And again, I have no further comments other than what's been discussed earlier. Open it up for comment from any supervisor? Okay. Opening it up to the public for any comments? And bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services, and B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises Incorporated for the adult residential support services and specialty mental health services for fiscal year 2021-22 for contract maximum of $110,000, authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Scott, and a second from Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one, 5.7. A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services, and B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Davis Guest Home for adult residential support services and specialty mental health services for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 for a contract maximum of $133,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the amendment. Oh, I guess that was not an amendment. And any comments from the board? Okay. Looking for any comments from the public, opening that up. And hearing none, bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services, and B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Davis Guest Home for adult residential support services and specialty mental health services for fiscal year 21-22 for a contract maximum of $133,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the, is it an amendment or agreement? It says amendment, so I'm reading it that way.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Director Metcalf, for being here for these items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I appreciate your support in this, so thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to item 7 point, no, sorry, 6.9, our 1:00 p.m. item. A, consideration of agreement with Prentice Long PC for redistricting consulting services not to exceed $35,000. B, consideration of redistricting 101, a presentation by Margaret Long of Prentice Long, and possible direction to staff. And I believe that I will ask Ms. Parker to lead this discussion.
Yes, thank you, excuse me, thank you, Chair. Deputy County Administrative Officer Matthew Rothstein will actually introduce this item. So wherever he is, there he is.
Good afternoon, board members. It's a pleasure to address your board this afternoon, as always. As you're aware, census data is collected every 10 years, and in the year following, counties are responsible to undertake redistricting. That's the process by which we ensure that supervisory districts are essentially equivalent in terms of population. There have been significant changes made to the relevant federal and state laws over the past, over the past 10 years. So in coordination with registrar voters and information technology offices, proposals were requested from four qualified potential contractors to support our efforts, and three responded, redistricting partners Nielsen, Merximer, and Prentice Long. Committee of county department heads and staff found that Prentice Long was by far the best fit for our county's needs over that period, and one of the key elements of that was, while all of the, all of the potential contractors had qualifications, certainly, Margaret Long of Prentice Long will be assigned directly to help Lake County during the critical six-week period where we have all federal census data and state reconciliations later this year. So the, therefore, staff is recommending that your board approve the attached agreement with Prentice Long PC for redistricting consulting services with costs not to exceed $35,000, and that's part A of this item today.
Thank you very much, and I wanted to check in, see if Ms. Long wanted to make a statement on part A.
Well, good afternoon. I don't have anything to add to that. I'm happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, if we get to part B, I'll answer all the questions you have regarding redistricting, and I very much look forward to working with this board.
Perfect. And I know that there's a timeline in the documentation of when we can anticipate the process to happen. Any questions or comments from board members? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments or questions from the public regarding this item? All right. Let's bring it back to the board, and let's go ahead and take action on part A.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve consideration of agreement with Prentice Long PC for redistricting consulting services not to exceed $35,000.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Crandall, and a second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And next is part B, consideration of redistricting 101, a presentation by Margaret Long. Ms. Long, floor is yours.
Thank you. Is there a possibility to share screen, or would that, I know my PowerPoint was included as part of the backup, but I just wanted to know if that would be the best mechanism.
You do have permission to share your screen.
Wonderful. Let me start from the beginning. Is that showing?
Yes, it is.
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much for having me here today. This is, a process is, is going to get us to know each other very well, since it's going to be an ongoing process for the next several months, concluding in December. Today is just the brief overview of what's changed since the last redistricting process. It is, it's going to provide you some outline in terms of what you're going to expect to see and some timelines that are going to be important to know. As Matthew said, every 10 years, we get new census data from the federal government. When we get that information, it's now the responsibility of local entities to use that information to draw lines and make districts. This is applicable to all counties, since you have your, your board of supervisors appointed based on their jurisdiction. It also applies to cities that are not at large and special districts. But for the purposes today, we're going to focus on the county and what the county's responsibilities are related to what happens when you get this information, and what do you do with it before the maps are drawn. In 2011, if anyone was part of that process back then, it looked a lot different than it does today. And the reason is, is because there's been some significant changes in both federal and state law. If, if I were to go through each and every one of those changes, this, this would be a probably six-hour training, because they have really increased the responsibilities and the obligations on local jurisdictions. And they've created, the Voting Rights Act has been, has been completely redone, the rules on gerrymandering have been done, and the population equity rules are new and important to know. and the population equity rules, um, are, are new and, and important to, to know. Um, there's also changes in the state law related to the timing, the workload, the hearings, public outreach, record keeping, among a number of other, uh, changes that are taking place. Uh, and again, the, the board is not expected to know these, uh, that's our responsibility to keep up on them. Uh, but it, there may be a question about, well, we did it differently in two thousand eleven. And the answer is yes, you did, because it is, it was very different back in two thousand eleven. Uh, and we're dealing with, with the two thousand twenty one rules. One of the most significant changes relates to A V eight forty nine. And what that does is it sets a list of priorities that the board has to consider it, when drawing these lines for the supervisory district. Back in two thousand eleven, the real issue was, uh, are the districts equal? And the rule was, and it still is, that they have to be ten percent of each other. That was really the one main rule that, that they had. There was a bunch of the other factors you could consider, but ultimately, the, the goal was to make the jurisdictions, each of them equal in size within ten percent. Now they've changed that. While that's still the number one priority, there are a number of other factors that come into play that, that the board has to consider and the board has to make findings on. Uh, the, I've outlined some of the more important ones and some of the ones that are, uh, higher on the list of priorities, but the list is quite long. Uh, the first one is that they are requiring jurisdictions to be geographically contiguous. Uh, that comes from a couple jurisdictions, uh, after two thousand eleven, who made, um, their boundaries look like snakes and they divided them up by rivers and they, they, the government said, no, we need it to be contiguous. The next most important factor is that communities of interest must remain together. So they specify this, they put in the legislation, community of interest must remain together. But they failed to provide any real guidance on what a community of interest is. So in some news, so in some jurisdictions are viewing this very liberally, meaning anything can be considered a community of interest. If folks have a, uh, joint belief in, uh, the need of a dog park, for example, uh, they can form together and be designated a community of interest. Um, other folks are looking at more broadly, you know, looking at economic impacts, uh, whether, you know, what, what type of, um, industry you have, um, and other major factors. Uh, but the, the issue is that they made this community of interest a very important factor in making these determinations. They provided no guidance. Uh, and so we anticipate this is going to be one of those hotly contested items going forward. But what we need to do is make sure we focus on the concept of community of interest and make sure we spell out exactly what those, that those entail, and, and I'll talk about that further. The next requirement is that they require cities to be kept together. Now, that's impossible for rural jurisdictions. For jurisdictions where the majority of your population base is in a city, uh, it's very hard to have those in one district or the other, or else you're going to not be able to comply with a ten percent rule. Uh, so there are, there are mechanisms for, for the jurisdiction to, to not keep cities together. But in doing so, there are required findings that must be made in order to divide, divide up these cities. Um, they have to be easily identifiable, compact, again, that's trying to prevent the snake, the, the snake-like jurisdictions where, uh, boundaries where they, they're all over the place. And of course, as was before, there can be no partisan gerrymandering, meaning you can't draw your lines in order to keep a political group together or to keep an elected, that's currently in office, in office. So the big issue regarding, uh, the census is the delay. Uh, if you participated in two thousand eleven, you'll remember that the information, the census data from the federal government was released in April. And here we are in May, and it hasn't been released. And we are, but now being told that we're looking at a September thirtieth, twenty twenty one projected date to be released by the federal government. So that's the date, the date when we get our data blocks, the information that we can ultimately use for, uh, to, to create the, the, the G I S mapping to determine who, what populations are where. But the state of California added on an additional requirement that we didn't have before, which is that they are now asking us to adjust the popu- the, the numbers based on the prison population. What that means is if there are members of Lake County who are currently incarcerated, the state of California is going to find their home residence, and then they're going to adjust the data from the federal government to put that person in this jurisdiction. So the state of California, when they get the federal government's information, has asked for thirty days in order to be able to adjust it for prison population. So Lake County will not be receiving any data until approximately October thirtieth, twenty twenty one. There is a required twenty one day waiting period when we receive this information before we even start to draw our maps. The concept behind that is they want to give, um, groups an opportunity to draw the first maps and provide those to the jurisdiction. So we are required to hold on to that data for twenty one days. Now I put November fifth, twenty twenty one in there because my understanding is that there's legislation currently coming through that is going to reduce that twenty one days potentially down to, uh, to a week. And, which is going to be essential, because if we are, if we're forced to the twenty one day waiting period, we're not going to even be able to draw our first map until mid-November. So between when we get this information, we can draw our first map, and December fifteenth, there's a lot that needs to be done then. But December fifteenth, twenty twenty one, is the date that this has to be completed by. And this is not an optional date, it's not, uh, it's not a flowy date, this is a date that must be met. And the rule is that if, if the Lake County does not have their map officially approved by your legislative body by December fifteenth, twenty twenty one, you lose jurisdiction over your mapping, and it goes to the, the courts to make these decisions. I, I have a lot of folks saying, well, why don't we just let the court draw the lines for us? Uh, well, there's problems with that. One is the court's going to charge you for drawing the lines, and they're going to charge you a lot of money for doing that. And second, you'll have no say or control of how it ultimately turns out. So the recommendation is, is everything in your power to make sure that you hit that December fifteenth, twenty twenty one date. As part of the legislation I talked about earlier, there are talks about moving that date out. Uh, the problem with that, of course, is that this date is actually tied to real elections, meaning this information needs to be in place so that our next election can go forward. And the date that, that papers can start being pulled for the next election is December sixteenth. So what this means is that your elector, your registered voter is how, is going to have one day in order to enter an entire new mapping system in, which of course is impossible to do. So when we look at that December fifteenth date, uh, I, while that is our drop dead date, um, it is important to remember that there is stuff that needs to be done on the elector side that, that needs to get done before we can have an election. So unless all of these dates get moved by the state, uh, we really do need to look at trying to have it done in enough time for your, uh, your registered voters. So the new rules regarding what we have to do from that period of time when we can, you know, we get our data to the December fifteenth, uh, in twenty twenty, I'm sorry, in two thousand eleven, the requirement was to have one public meeting. That has been changed now to at least four public meetings. There can be one of these meetings held before our draft maps are drawn. So that's before we get that information in the beginning of November. And at least one meeting has to be held on a Saturday, a Sunday, or a weekday after six P M. All the rules under the Brown Act apply if the board is sitting as the committee, uh, but they can be, and they can be done, uh, virtually. But it's important that the four meetings are held, uh, and that they're properly noticed. So the jurisdictions must encourage public participation. Uh, and this is not just the Brown Act, this is additional requirements on the jurisdiction. The first thing is there has to be a website or media presence, and it has to be maintained for a period of ten years. And I'll talk in a minute about what needs to be on that website, but it is, it's every piece of information that is part of this process must be on a website and accessible to the public. The publication of the notices, uh, it's not a seventy two hour notice, it is a five days before, uh, hearing, uh, in a seven day notice if you're, if you're actually reviewing a map. So there's additional noticing requirements that are going to be placed for these hearings. There is requirements of a live translation if you received seventy two hour notice of it. Uh, the state of California has, uh, determined what jurisdictions have to have live translation, uh, and they will provide that information, uh, to, to the county as it's available about which ones need to do the live translation, but it's important to be prepared that there may be a live translation requirement. And when we're taking the minutes on these, it is going to be a verbatim minute, meaning we're going to have to actually take down word for word everything that's said, not only by the public, uh, but by the commission, but by staff. And again, anything that's live or in writing must be stored and collected. And the reason that that is a requirement is because you're creating a record as to why you're drawing the lines the way you're drawing them, and it has to be, uh, supported through oral and written testimony. So there are four different ways that a jurisdiction can structure this committee going forward. Uh, there are two that I'm recommending, uh, to be considered, but, uh, but I will provide information on all, all four, and this will be a discussion item I, I would request some thought on today. So the rule is, is that the board of supervisors can sit as the committee. So you can sit and participate in those four meetings, ultimately ju- decide on the drawing of the map and vote on it and approve it. Uh, we call that the in-house model. That's where the board will act in that capacity. But the board can also, uh, form a redistricting committee, and this is made up of citizens in your community. Uh, it, they would require them to apply, get selected, and place on this committee. They will be then the ones that hear the four, four, uh, meetings, uh, obtain the information from your G I S support, and draft the maps, uh, which will ultimately come back to the board for consideration. The board will make the ultimate decision, but the recommendation will be done by committee. There is another method, which is a hybrid, which is a creation of a restructuring committee, but also creating of, a group that is actually acting in place of the board. In California, there are no jurisdictions that are using this hybrid model. Uh, and the reason is, is because it kind of takes the worst of both processes and puts it into place. It just makes it very difficult and hard. And the last one is where you get an independent commission. So these individuals take the place of the board members. They actually hear the entire process, and then they vote on it and put into place the, what the district lines are. Currently in California, only two jurisdictions are using the commission. Both of them are using it because it was voted in as an initiative. So the people voted that they wanted a commission, and it's, I believe, Santa Barbara and San Diego are the two that are utilizing it. But that completely takes the process out of the hands of the board members and puts it into an independent third party. So if you're like me, I like to know what everyone around me is doing. So the, the very, folks have been posting from different jurisdictions of what type of model they're creating. And I pulled it at a point in time, I think it was about two weeks, so I pulled what, what had been provided. It's interesting to note that you, you would think that it would depend on the size of the jurisdiction, whether they're rural or urban, uh, in terms of what method they picked, but that's not necessarily the case. If you look, there you've got big counties doing the in-house and small counties doing advisory committee and reverse. Uh, so it really just depends on your, uh, desire as a board to move forward. I would say that, um, in order to get a committee together, uh, you would have to be aware and follow all of the rules regarding the Matti Act relating to posting and, and, and obtaining people. Uh, and so that would delay some of these timelines out, uh, and, and, and put the process in, in the hands of a committee. So again, question number one to decide is how we want to structure our process. Does the board want to take responsibility, uh, or do we want to, uh, appoint a committee to do so? The next thing is, is has to be remembered is that there is a lot of work that's going to go to staff in terms of getting this process up and running. As I talked about, there is a lot of I T. and website requirements. Um, the website, uh, we, we, you know, will prepare all the, the, the text for what's going in there, but it does need to be kept up to date with a complete explanation of the process, a procedure for testi- testifying or submitting testimony, a calendar with every date that we're going to, we're going to set needs to be on there. Uh, notices, agendas, there has to be recordings of every meeting that was held, uh, as well as verbatim minutes once they're prepared, uh, and all drafts and adopted maps. And this doesn't just include the drafts that are provided by your consultants or your G I S staff. It also includes drafts of maps provided by citizens. So if somebody comes in with a paper towel, uh, that they've drawn a map on, we have to figure out how to preserve that and get that on our website. We are required, again, to keep these records for a period of ten years uh, and make them available for the public within two weeks of the comments or the hearing. So again, it's a quick turnaround. Uh, and if these meetings go long, there's going to be a lot of work on the, on staff in order to get these documents ready to be posted. It's really important, however, that we do create this database of information because if, if any of the decisions about the districting are challenged, we're going to have to have justification for why that decision was made. So if you move a line a couple inches, it may seem like nothing, we're just doing it to, to keep the, um, to keep the ten percent rule in place. But we're going to have to have it documented why that's been done, so that if it's challenged, we can then provide that information and provide that justification and support. So record keeping is going to be a very important component of this. So the dates and the times, um, that we have coming forward, um, this is somewhat recommended, uh, but this is kind of how we would see it work. Um, so the, the May is when you're having your introductory, uh, training, so you're right on target for doing that. Um, you have internal G I S staff, and in, in consult- consultation with your C A O.'s office, uh, and, um, folks involved, you have the ability to do a lot of this in-house, which does, um, set you apart from a lot of other jurisdictions. Uh, and because of that, um, you're, you're way ahead of this June deadline, uh, because you are able to do that in-house. And, and my office has support if there do need additional assistance with both I T. and G I S. Uh, we're looking at July of creating a website and an outreach plan. That's where you'll start developing those, those, uh, timelines, the, uh, the information, the data, um, that's going to go forward. Uh, your first, your pre-draft public hearing, that's the one meeting that can be held before you have, um, your data and your information, it should be in August. That's the information where you're really going to focus on one topic, which is the communities of interest. And again, without any definition from the state, uh, it's, it's going to make it interesting. Uh, but we are, that's the one where you want individuals to come in and identify what they view as their community of interest. It's recommended, and I have, um, a template of a, um, a brochure that you hand out as part of this where folks can fill it out and submit it. Uh, they provide information on what they determine to be their community of interest. And you'll be surprised what you get back, but everything we get back must be considered and either, uh, incorporated or explained why it's not incorporated. When we receive ours, uh, data information in September, there's nothing we can do with that then. We're going to wait till we get the, the prison adjustments in October. And then we're going to look to have our first map, uh, published by, um, again, hopefully November fifth, if the twenty one day rule is abolished. Uh, and then again, then we're looking at doing three additional meetings. Now, the way is currently in your code, it is in your code as an ordinance. So it has been, the, the lines were drawn during two thousand eleven, and they were incorporated as part of your code. What this means is that we can't just adopt a resolution to overturn them. We actually have to have a first reading and a second reading of the new proposed map, uh, in order to be able to, um, correct what was done in two thousand eleven. Not correct, but, 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 uh, to be, uh, uh, replace, repeal and replace what was done in two thousand eleven. So again, we're looking at having two meetings. Now, if we run short on time, there are mechanisms we can talk about with your county council about potentially repealing that in advance and looking at doing it by resolution. But we did just get a ruling from legislative council that said you don't have to wait the thirty day waiting period. So we don't have to have the first reading, the second reading, and the thirty day waiting period all done before December fifteenth. All we have to do is have the first reading and the second reading done. And once that is done, it's considered adopted for the purpose of the state, so we're good to go. But it is still, again, we're still looking at potentially having two, first, a second reading in addition to the meetings prior. So again, this is, uh, this is going to be a very tight turnaround time. Uh, if the state does not increase our time, uh, we are looking at, uh, seeing a lot of each other in the month of November, and hopefully we will be, you'll be done seeing me in the beginning of December, uh, when we are able to get this done. Uh, but the best way to handle this is to do a lot of the work upfront, and that includes getting your I T., getting your G I S. ready, uh, looking at some factors, um, you know, looking at equity issues that are available from the state already, uh, and getting that community of interest work done in advance so that when we get to actually get the numbers, we're really focused on looking at the priority list that was created by the state uh, and looking at the lines on the map. So those would be the last, the focus of the last three meetings. So that is, uh, that's the presentation, just the introduction. I, you know, I, I hopefully I haven't scared everyone off. This process is doable. Uh, it will, it will be a lot of work, and again, it will be a lot of, um, a time, but it is doable. And you are in the same boat as every other county in the state of California right now, all wondering how you're going to get all that done in one month. Um, but again, we will work out a timeline and we'll get it done, and it's, it's, it's going to be, uh, it's going to be a good process. We'll make sure of that. Uh, so again, I, I would, I'd love to answer any questions you may have, and I would also love, um, to open up a discussion item about, uh, how we view structuring this committee. Again, whether you're looking at doing it internally, uh, having the board sit as the committee, or whether you were looking to bring in, um, third parties. Uh, one of the, one of the jurisdictions that, uh, I, I highlighted, they, they did something very interesting, which is they actually brought in their planning commission to sit as the committee, which is always an option. But again, you're, you know your jurisdiction, you know your capacity, uh, you know your board capacity better than anyone. Um, and so with, with you and the administrative office, I would, I would be interested in hearing thoughts in terms of who's going to actually sit at that committee, but I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Uh, any comments or questions from the board? So personally, um, number one, I appreciate the, uh, information, uh, how, how the process is going to look. Personally, I, I, I would like to lean into, uh, not having the board of supervisors be the committee, but I know that our timeline is really the only thing that I worry about in creating such a committee and ensuring that we have the commitment of those who are chosen to be on that committee. Um, and I, I guess the only logical, uh, logic that I can provide as to why that is the way I'm leaning is for the fact that, uh, it could be perceived that we have something to gain or lose depending on what the redistricting looks like. Uh, and that if it was on someone else's decision-making, uh, process to be part of that committee, that it, uh, would maybe be a smoother way to go. So that's just me putting out, uh, my opinion there. Yes? So that's just me putting out, uh, my opinion there. Yes.
So I, I have a thought on that. Um, I'm pretty sure that District Five has lost the most people in the last 10 years. And, um, it's a, it's a district that, uh, covers a lot of communities and that I've gotten to know a lot of them really well through, um, the past couple of years. And I'm just not sure I know somebody offhand that has that same knowledge of all the different neighborhoods. Um, you know, going from Buckingham all the way to almost Anderson Springs. So it's, it's a, it's a complicated district. And, um, to find one person that has that knowledge i- is going to be difficult for me.
Definitely. Any other comments or questions?
You know, um, Chair, Chair Sabatier, I can lean toward yours also. If we, if we did have time for the committee, but it does sound like we have, you know, the time crunch to move forward. So, um, Margaret, I, I know you said you had the two options. Do you have a, a one recommendation?
Well, there are four options and I do have-
I know there are four options, but-
Which is to use, uh, to not use the option three and four. Uh, that's my recommendation. Uh, whether it's done by committee or it's done by the board, both of them are doable. Uh, again, this, this would be a, a committee, uh, under the Madi Act, which we would have to do a posting, uh, for a period of time, two weeks, uh, for individuals to apply for these positions on the commission. Then we would have to vote them into place, uh, and then when they're in place, we'd have to, you know, we would have to do some training for them as well. Uh, but frankly, because you have your GIS staff and your IT staff internally, uh, we do have, uh, the month of June, uh, more free and open than, than it would have been if you didn't have wonderful staff that can, that can take a lot of this burden. So is it possible? Absolutely. Um, is it, uh, is it going to be, um, additional work, uh, to upfront? Yes, but then ultimately they'll be doing the, the, the hard work in the back. I will say that a lot of the jurisdictions I am working with leaned toward that originally, but they're having difficulty finding people to take that, those positions because it's, it's going to be a lot of work. Um, and for a jurisdiction that doesn't have significance to their, um, to their, their population blocks, sometimes it can be viewed as, as not, uh, important, although it is very important. Um, so we are having trouble getting, uh, getting people to apply for those positions, but we can, we can run it and see what happens.
Are those volunteer positions or are they paid positions?
It would be volunteer.
And is there a, an estimate on how many hours, uh, we would expect them to volunteer?
So the requirement is they would have to attend all four of the meetings. Uh, the meetings can run anywhere from an hour to four hours each. I would, I would anticipate that they will, they would have a pretty significant commitment, uh, from the months of November and early December. So probably four meetings, if not more, uh, during that period of time.
And, and I would suggest that maybe this year might be easier than most other years where now virtually it's being offered rather than being forced to be in person, which might help facilitate with attendance.
I'm good either way.
I, I, I'm still pretty concerned about finding somebody that, uh, has the understanding of my entire district.
Okay.
Cause I know, I know it's huge that there's, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's people in my district that are subject, subject matter experts or, you know, would know. And so I would not mind, um, but I don't mind doing it as well for us to be the committee or whatever. Or even like, I think I heard her mention something about the planning commission. I'm fine with that too.
I, and I know that that was discussed. Personally, I would like to steer clear of using our planning commission if possible. Uh, I know that they're extremely busy. Every one of their agendas is pretty full right now. And, uh, yeah, I feel like we ask quite a bit from them, uh, as of late, and I want to make sure that we don't ask more. Uh, that's my opinion though, that doesn't have to be what we do. Supervisor Scott.
I agree with that. I think we already have too much on the plate of our planning commission to go, um, that direction, but I'm good, um, either way. But I think we have to, um, be cautious about, um, using volunteers, knowing that they have to show up at every meeting. And if they're unable to, then we're stuck. And, you know, we don't make our timeline. So it's a difficult decision to have to make.
And I see we have our CAO who's raising their hand.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, just a question for Margaret Long. Margaret, I assume we would be coming back to the board with a separate agenda item, asking them to take action to, uh, either designate themselves or form a committee or option three or four?
For, for, yes, we would. If, if the board is, is, today, I'm, it would be appropriate to receive direction from staff. If the board would like to keep it internally, we would not have to bring that back as a separate agenda item. If they are looking to form any sort of the committees under option two, three or four, uh, we would have to bring that back as a separate item. Correct.
And so what I would like to, um, offer to the board is a recommendation from staff is, uh, in, in my view, it really, the best approach would be with your board because I think your board is most attuned to all of the needs of your constituents rather than being, uh, uh, an individual that might, uh, be most knowledgeable about their particular area within your juristic, district, um, jurisdiction. Each of your board members knows your jurisdictions in total. And so I would recommend and ask your board to consider having it be you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comment. Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, then, you know, tough decision, obviously, to move forward, but I think the points and the timelines, yeah, I'd be willing to go with us being the district, yeah, us, the board. So-
Okay.
Cause I agree, you know, we have our advisory committees, but they're really to each and every area that is specific. So I imagine there's someone out there, there always is, that knows everything, you know, or at least a lot of people in the community, but, uh, yeah. So I guess I'll put mine in for us being the, the redistricting commission or board or whatever it is.
Okay. Any further comments or questions before we open it up for the public? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments or questions? I see none in our boardroom and again, in the Zoom room. Press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand or dial star nine if you're in via telephone. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. I'm, I'm willing to do either way. I see that, I mean, my personal opinion is the majority of the work is going to be done by staff or GIS. And the, um, the changes that will occur throughout these meetings while we have to listen to the comments being made and we have to at least entertain what's being said. I, I, I think that the, the, the first cut and the last cut are not going to look completely polar opposites of one another. There's, there's going to be a fairly good attempt to make sure that the first cut is going to be as close as we can get and maybe some slight tiny changes. Uh, so to ask somebody to take that much time of their life, um, and then possibly having this not fit the timeline, I'm okay if, if we will be the committee. So I, I, I'm, I'm game either way. And if that receives enough support, just kind of looking at the rest of the board, then I would say that's your, uh, direction to staff is, well, let's go ahead and keep going with the board.
Thank you, Chair.
All right.
Thank you, Chair.
And that concludes that item. Thank you, Ms. Long.
Thank you. Have a great day.
And you do the same. And we are done with all our timed items. And we are on our last item of the day, other than our calendars, 7.3. Consideration of Yolo County Flood Control and Water Conservation District's Request for Emergency Lake Water Diversion. Director DeLeon.
Good afternoon. Um, thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation this afternoon. Uh, uh, the memorandum, I am hopeful, explains the situation. Uh, I'll be happy to kind of summarize that. We were recently contacted by the Yolo County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, uh, following a request, uh, that they received by Calpine Corporation, uh, for an emergency water diversion, uh, from Clear Lake. As your board's aware, Calpine utilizes, uh, water injected, uh, for the purposes of, of steam generation and other operations, uh, there at the Geysers. They are facing a shortage of water, uh, due to a project that's being, uh, conducted in Sonoma County. Uh, I should note that they receive water from, uh, Lake County through, um, uh, Lake County, um, Sanitation District, Lakosan sends, uh, treated effluent as well as, uh, lake water. And they also receive, uh, water from Sonoma County. And I believe there are individuals from all of those agencies, uh, present today to help, uh, answer any specific detailed questions about, um, uh, about those arrangements. Yolo County Flood Control, uh, and Water Conservation District asked for a support letter for this, uh, emergency request, uh, in light of, uh, the fact that, uh, your board, uh, was going to be taking up consideration of a drought emergency declaration, uh, which you did earlier today. Uh, I felt that, uh, it was, uh, appropriate to bring, uh, this decision to your board. Uh, and, uh, and so that is what we're, uh, asking, uh, for your consideration today. Uh, I did provide, um, some, some details about, uh, to try to, to help quantify, uh, what is, uh, what, what is the amount that they're asking for, which, uh, is noted in the, in the memo of 250 acre feet of water, uh, that they'll be requesting, uh, over the course of approximately 30 days, uh, while this project in Sonoma County is, is, uh, under construction. And I tried to give you some perspective of, of what that is. Uh, 250 acre feet of water, uh, over the surface area of the lake, uh, is, uh, approximately a sixteenth of an inch, uh, in, in depth. Um, during the peak summer months, I think it's important to, to note that, uh, the lake loses approximately 900 acre feet of water per day due to evaporation. And, um, again, according to Calpine, uh, they intend to use the water for, uh, various, uh, operational, uh, maintenance and fire suppression supplies. And again, I'm hopeful that someone from that agency is on, uh, the meeting today to, uh, to help further provide, uh, information, uh, about, about their needs. Uh, with that, um, my role today was to facilitate, uh, getting this to your board. Uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, regarding my memo or any of the calculations, uh, that, that, uh, I made. But, um, I'm, I'm actually, again, going to be turning over, uh, the discussion to, uh, various members of Yolo County and, and, uh, Calpine, uh, and special districts for any specific details. So with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Director DeLeon before we ask other agencies to provide some info? No? Uh, I, I do have a question, um, for Director DeLeon. Has this been requested in the past, I believe, uh, and we'll hear from these agencies. I believe from what I understood, this is a maintenance project on the, uh, pipeline going up to, uh, the Calpine, um, Geysers. And, uh, wondering if in the past this has been requested, uh, from us?
Chair Sabatier, I've been the Water Resources Director since 2010 and, and this is the first request that, that I've ever received, uh, of this nature. I can't speak to anything that happened prior to that. Um, perhaps others, um, might have that information, but, uh, not in my tenure as a director here.
Thank you very much. So do we have, uh, Calpine representatives here? If you would like to come to the microphone. Uh, and at this point, since you are the subject matter, I will, uh, forego the three minutes, uh, so we can make sure that we get the time needed to get answers from you.
Thank you. My name is Guy Tipton. I'm Director of Asset Management for Calpine Geysers. Um, I'd really like to thank members of the Board of Supervisors, Special Districts and Public Works for your willingness to hear this special request from us. As many of you are aware, the Geysers is a rare geothermal steam resource located in the Maicama Mountains, straddling 45 square miles of the lake in Sonoma County. There's only one other resource in the world of its kind, and that's in Italy. To be successful, the Geysers requires really three things. Access to heat from the earth's core, fractured or permeable rock and water. Last year marked the 60th anniversary of power production. And while the Geysers has three of those three sources or properties naturally, the milestone of 60 years would not have been possible without years of ingenuity, planning, partnership in the development of two state-of-the-art water-to-power recycle projects. The Southeast Geysers Efluent Project, referred to as SAGAP, that's the Lake County Project, began operation in 1997. It's 40 miles of pipeline that brings secondary treated recycled water to Lake, from Lake County to the Geysers daily. The second project, the Santa Rosa Geysers Recharge Project, referred to as SRGRP, completed in 2003, and it is about 42 miles of pipeline delivering tertiary treated water from Sonoma County. Both systems are vital to the Geysers and operate with ongoing oversight and partnership in conjunction with help from Lake County and the City of Santa Rosa. These two large-scale projects bring operators at the Geysers reliable supply of water while providing Lake and Sonoma County with a reliable, environmentally responsible method of disposing of wastewater. Close collaboration, miles of pipeline, pumping stations, and infrastructure are required in order to deliver and manage this recycled water. And as most, as is the case with most things, both systems do require periodic outages to carry out maintenance and repairs. As the agenda suggests, Calpine has submitted an emergency request to Yolo County Flood Control and Water Conservation District to receive 250 acre feet of water from Clear Lake, beginning May 26th through June 23rd. Since these projects first began, um, this is the first time that Calpine has made this request, a request of this nature. Before making it, we explored all other possible options to the full extent possible. Before you today is Yolo County Flood Control's request for a letter of concurrence from Lake County for 250 acre feet with a sustained water flow, and that equates to a sustained water flow of about 880 gallons per minute. In contrast, in 2020, during the month of June and July, Calpine received approximately 8100 gallons per minute in tertiary treated water from the City of Santa Rosa. The water has multiple uses at the Geysers. Water is injected to replenish the underground reservoir and is also used to address fire protection concerns and water balance issues. As Lake County faces drought conditions, we do not make this request lightly. The mountainous terrain, wildfires, and public safety power shut-offs, affectionately referred to as PSS events, the pandemic, stretched resources, and other factors significantly impact rural remote operations in and around the Geysers, as well as the ability to carry out and maintain outages. Simply put, the timing for the SRGRP outage is necessary to continue the longevity of that system, but does have far-reaching impacts to power production and necessitates this request. The SRGRP water is used to support fire protection needs as our water storage is limited, particularly during, particularly during a wildfire. We expect potential for the wild, for wildfire to be high during the period of this request. We expect potential for wildfire to be high during the period of this request. After the Valley Fire, which occurred in 2015, Calpine was unable to accept water from treated sewage from Lake County through the SAGAP program for a period of three months due to equipment damage. Since then, our cooling tower systems have been improved. However, without water, the systems are useless, leaving our plants vulnerable with no resource of water for fighting a wildfire. A replacement of this SRGRP water is needed to support well operations at the Geysers. Without it, wells will need to be shut in to provide equipment safety. Shutting wells means stopping flow of the well, which presents additional risk, as wells that are not flowing have a tendency to experience wellbore collapse. Shutting wells will result in curtailing our power plant operations. Locally, the Geysers is the largest source of electricity. Without the requested water, we will need to curtail our power plants, resulting in less power to the California grid, especially during a time when we anticipate it will be needed to support the power grid. We expect approximately a 25-megawatt decrease in output. That's equivalent to about 30,000 households. Calculated over a month, the lost generation will result in a reduction of royalty payments of about $90,000. This is a short-term request for a limited period. This request for the minimum water, we estimate need to sustain operations, and we will take a lesser amount if indeed we can work through our water needs. Looking ahead to the future, Calpine's innovative and resourceful team continues to look for new technology to further sustain and maximize our resources. As an example, we have a super rotor program designed to create more energy using less steam. Several super rotors have already been installed at the Geysers, with a new one currently going into our Calistoga Plant, which is located in Lake County. We are also exploring water conservation projects. California is facing drought conditions again, and Governor Newsom recently emphasized it is important to act early and anticipate and mitigate the most severe impacts where possible. Delaying is not an option for the work needed on the Santa Rosa Recharge Project, but once the work is complete, operations during the summer of 2021 will be optimized so that we can meet our current circumstances. We appreciate our ongoing relationship with Lake County, and thank you for your consideration. And if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to fill those questions.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and start with Supervisor Piska.
So can you speak kind of directly about the fire suppression requirements and how you would not have enough water or where? So we can kind of understand that picture?
So the Santa Rosa system allows us to take water directly into our cooling towers. It's tertiary-treated water. From our Lake County system, when we inject treated sewage into the system, it's secondary treated. Therefore, we don't have a permit to be able to use that in our cooling towers. From the cooling towers, the water is distributed to our wells. The cooling tower basin is used for fire suppression. You know, much of the problem we had when our cooling towers burned down in 2015 is our systems weren't as capable as they are now of putting those towers out. With those systems and with the additional water, we fully expect that we would be able to meet those needs. So we're asking for lake water so that we can put that water into our cooling towers. Lakosan has graciously agreed to hold the secondary-treated water in their ponds for this period so that we can run specifically on lake water.
So is the lake water going to be for the injection or for the cooling towers?
It's going to be mainly for cooling towers, for chemical mitigation of wells so that we don't have to shut those wells in. And if there's anything left, we would then use it for injection. And that's where I indicated in there, if we can take less, we will.
So I'm glad that you brought up the how much power, what the reduction in power would be.
Sure.
It's 25 kilowatts.
Yeah, and that's around the clock, 24/7.
Megawatts, I believe.
Megawatts.
Oh, yeah. And so that's about 30,000 homes.
Correct.
And so I know you work for Calpine, but I don't know the condition, how the state grid would be able to function with that loss? And if we're looking at heat waves like we have now, what do you think the impact of that would be?
Relatively small in terms of the total grid. You know, as Mr. De Leon mentions, you know, it's 1/16 of an inch on the lake. Well, 25 megawatts isn't much of an impact on the grid, obviously. I think the grid averages 40,000 to 50,000 megawatts, but it's still 30,000 homes. So when you're considering rolling blackouts, there will be an impact. I can't really quantify it more than 30,000 homes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I know that there was a fire in the Geysers in January.
Correct.
And is that, and that was really far, it was remote. It wasn't near, you know, any other resources. And so was that a fire that was put out by the cooling tower resources?
No, that was a wildland fire, and it was, CDF jumped on it immediately and had it out very quickly. And it wasn't a very large fire.
Okay.
The fires we worry about are the ones like the Kincaid Fire or the Valley Fire that impact our facilities. And we're thankful for CDF and everything they do. They respond very quickly.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Simon.
I just want to make sure, obviously, the support we're talking about today, obviously, is a support letter, concurrence from the county, making it very succinct on the request. I know Supervisor Sabatier asked about, you know, this request hadn't come through the board before. So my question on the affluent line coming from Santa Rosa for the May and June requests, you know, you guys have obviously done your due diligence and the homework, that would be back online when? I didn't get a date on just the end of June.
It's towards the end of June. June 23, I think, is their timeline. I believe Emma Watson from the City of Santa Rosa is on Zoom. And any questions that you would have about the overhaul, the need for it, the reasons why they need to do it now rather than later?
Okay.
I think Emma could answer those questions.
I'd say if it's regarding the agencies involved in this item, that we go ahead, and if you have a question specific to them, that we give them that time to respond.
Yeah, we'll look at the maintenance time and then when it would be back into operation, obviously. So Emma, greatly appreciate any information you could give us on that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thank you for having me today. As Mr. Tipton mentioned, I'm Emma Walton. I am the Deputy Director for Santa Rosa Water. I oversee the operations and maintenance of our regional wastewater treatment plant, as well as the Geysers, the operation of the Geysers Pipeline and our water use system. As Mr. Tipton mentioned, this work is absolutely vital to our operation and required for us to maintain the pipeline in good condition. We are anticipating, or we have a notice to proceed, work and a shutdown beginning May 26, and the contract is for a 30-day shutdown. We do anticipate that we will be able to accomplish all of the work needed within this 30 days, and we have included in our contract incentives for early completion. So there are incentives for our contractor to complete this work early, and if they do so, we will start the Geysers Pipeline back up as early as we possibly can.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. No, I think, go ahead.
So is the draw of water continuous over the 30 days, or is it all at once? If the work is done faster than 30-day periods, then would you require less water? Or how is that going to work?
So we're anticipating that it would be a fairly stable draw. It'd be about 1,800 gallons per minute. Once Santa Rosa is back up and running, there would be no need for the water from the lake. So we would immediately switch back over to Santa Rosa Water.
Any further questions or comments from the board?
You know, obviously, we should, talking about this.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, Jim Komski with South Lake Fire District, and he is attending in support and had a statement, if that's possible.
Okay. And at this moment, I would suggest that unless there's a specific question to him, we'll get to him when we get to public comment.
Okay.
Right now, we want to make sure the agencies involved in the project itself have the ability to speak, and let's continue on with Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, so thank you very much, Emma. Greatly appreciate it. And once again, I think I missed the start date. When is your project going to start?
So our contractor has already been issued a notice to proceed. They have mobilized and have begun prep work. The shutdown and the work that will occur once the pipeline is shut down and de-energized and drained is scheduled to begin May 26.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question for Ms. Walton. What is the maintenance schedule, since this was put together in 2003? Is there an every five years, every three years? What is the maintenance schedule for that pipeline?
We do continuous maintenance on the pipeline, both preventative and corrective maintenance. However, not all the maintenance that we need to undertake yearly can be done while the pipeline is energized and operating. So we enter into a joint maintenance shutdown every single year for, on average, it's a two-week shutdown. This year, because of additional work and failure of some expansion joints that we identified, we do, we have requested a 30-day shutdown to accommodate the work that needs to occur. These joints have been in the ground for 15 years and unfortunately have just reached the end of their useful life and need to be replaced. And three of them, as I mentioned, three of them have already failed of the five. We have put temporary measures in place to keep them functioning until we're able to replace them, but we do need to replace them.
Okay. Do you know what the average lifespan is of those joints for the pipeline?
So the ones that are currently installed, they are 15-year average lifespan. We are hoping the ones we're putting in now will be a 20-year lifespan.
Okay. So 15 years after 2003, as of 2018, maybe you should have been looking at doing some of those replacements is where I'm going with this?
That's correct. We actually in 2018 hired an engineering consultant to provide recommendations on how to repair or replace the expansion joints. We then quickly turned those into bid documents and put the contract out for bid last year. We actually awarded the contract last July, and were planning to do the work last October, but unfortunately, due to COVID, the manufacturer of the expansion joints was unable to meet the obligations of the contract. And the city and the contractor mutually agreed to postpone the work to be undertaken this year.
Thank you for that. And then in the two-week shutdowns prior to this one being 30 days, how did you, how were you able to get water to the facility where there was no need for a request of extra water? And maybe that needs to be responded to by Calpine.
Yes. Mr. Chair, if I can speak to that?
Yeah.
In years prior, we were able to pull water from the lake. Lakosan once again worked with us to pull lake water through the system, and they would store the secondary-treated sewage in their ponds. So as a result, we can place lake water into our cooling towers. So the real issue is the fact that for beginning May 1, we cannot, under contract, remove water from the lake. That's why this is an emergency request.
And prior years, it was done before May 1?
No, we were actually able to pull lake water from the lake in prior years.
Because of the level of the lake and the contract making you able to access that? So there's never been a request because things have been within the criteria of you being able to access that water and just working with the agreements that we have in place already?
Yeah, the only other year, water year, that we were not able to pull water from the lake was 2014. And in that year, we worked with Santa Rosa internally to ensure that we would not have to make a similar request.
Okay. And I just do want to make a statement. I know that we try to minimize the impact of 250 acre feet, but when you calculate that into gallons of water, if I'm correct with my math, it's 82 million gallons approximately of water, which is a lot of water, especially when we're looking that, as I stated earlier in one of our items, 60% of our residents of Lake County pull water through their water district to have drinking water, to be able to cook and have hygiene and things like that. That's where I get really stuck on, I get it that it's 1/16, but in a declaration of drought and the fact that our water is used so heavily by our residents as drinking water, it's energy or water, energy or water. And I get it that we don't want to mess either one of those things up. And I'm hopeful that the drought that we're looking at is a single year where maybe we can delay this maintenance project, and it seems it's already kind of passed its lifetime. But I'm still very concerned because if we say yes to the 250 acre feet and this is a multi-year drought, then we have even more issues as well, and we just gave away some of our water that people would use to actually live. So this is, in my opinion, it's a very difficult situation that is brought to us, and in my opinion, difficult to say yes for the fact that water is life. And so many of us here rely on that water in our lake, and it's a project in Sonoma And I know you said you looked at all the possible options on how to not have to ask for this. And I guess it's, I'm trying to figure out how it is that we end up helping with the project in Sonoma County. And I get it, we need to collaborate, but it's still, it's a taking, and I'm not sure that we're getting anything out of it, so.
Could I respond, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Couple of things. First of all, you're absolutely right when we state that we tried to mitigate the impact. We actually reached out to the City of Santa Rosa to see if they could begin this outage early. Emma, could you speak to your efforts to try to begin the outage early?
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, we were actually planning this work last October to occur, and the manufacturer of the joints was unable to meet the contractual obligations. We, when we received the request from Mr. Tipton, we reached out in December, again, to the joint manufacturer to see if they could expedite the manufacturing of the joints to get them on site sooner. We had originally, when we postponed the project from October, were shooting for a July construction timeframe, but recognizing the short water year and the implications of the drought, we really wanted to see if we could push this up any way possible. We did reach out to the joint manufacturer and entered into a contract with them to expedite the manufacturing. expedite the manufacturing and delivery. And we're willing to pay nearly $45,000 to have those expedited and delivered in order to get this project done sooner. Again, unfortunately, they just were unable to meet that deadline. But we really did try to do everything we could to expedite this project and minimize impacts.
Thank you, Emma. And then one more point I would like to make is you're absolutely correct that we use water to generate electricity. The real concern that we have and the reason that we made the request was more for fire protection and to protect our equipment, that is our wells and our, our water balance issues at the plants. I might also add that in 2015 during the valley fire, there were two cooling towers in Lake County that burned to the ground, our unit 16, and then of course, the Westford Flat Plant. So you're absolutely right, this is going to benefit Sonoma County, but Lake County will benefit as well.
Go for it.
So if you don't get the lake water, will the cooling towers be empty?
We'll do everything we can to mitigate water usage. As, as I stated in my presentation, we will probably need to shut in wells that require water as part of our chemical mitigation program. So we will lose the steam from those wells. As I also stated, when you shut a well in, there's no flow going through it, those wells, there's a much higher risk that the sidewalls could collapse and we get wellbore collapse. A new well is about $7 million to drill. So that gives you a sense of the concern that we have. We're going to do everything we can to mitigate water usage, but it will result in a loss in generation and leave us open to potential problems if indeed we do have a fire.
So I see that Scott Harder is on, and I was wondering if Director Harder could speak to the impact of that amount of water being taken from the lake for our water purveyors?
Certainly, as Bruno mentioned, 250 acre feet, it's, you know, 80 million gallons plus. So that is certainly a potential impact for the water purveyors. I also thought it was important to note that the, the contract that was alluded to earlier by Mr. Tipton allows Lakosan to pull about 7,500 acre feet out in any given water year for transportation up to the geysers for injection and use in their cooling towers. This last water year from May 1 through April 30 of 2021, their usage on that was less than 4,000 acre feet. So keeping that in mind, they did not use their full allotment in the hopes that there would be some offset recognizing that this project was coming up. But certainly, there are a lot of considerations with this request. I believe that's why it's before the board for your consideration. It's a, it's a serious request with consequences on either side.
Can you repeat the numbers that, that they would typically draw on how much they decided not to offset?
Contractually, they're allowed to pull about 7,500 acre feet in a given water year. And that's Lakosan has those rights with Yolo to divert that volume of water, no more than 10% in a given month. So about 750 acre feet in a given month to send up to Calpine. So in the previous water year, which just ended, the volume that was diverted was less than 4,000 acre feet. And in the month of April particularly, Calpine shut down their water diversions minimized. They still pulled about 200 acre feet out, but they were entitled to up to 750 acre feet. So they scaled back on their diversions during the month of April, recognizing that there was this potential problem coming up in the hopes of being able to carry that over and utilize it in May and June.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from board members?
Not at this time.
I do have another question for Director Harder. You speak of this year. In past years, do they usually meet their full capacity of what they're able to draw? Or has that been also within the 4,000 range?
It varies, but I don't believe it's been up at the full capacity in any of the past years that I looked in the recent history. I'd have to go consult my numbers and report back on that. But I don't recall them using the full 7,500 acre feet in quite some time.
Okay, and it would be, it would be useful to know in comparison too, because it almost sounds like they've been nice to us by not using this amount of water. But if they also used 4,000 acre feet last year, then it's not necessarily being nice, it's just the way the system is, that's what the system requires in order to be sustainable.
Correct. However, they did recognize going into April that the, the schedule and the timing of this project, the lake levels which are tied into that contract allowing withdrawal or not, were looking problematic. So in the month of April, they did consciously scale back their use in the hopes that it would allow for a diversion into the next water year.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further comments or questions from the board before we open it up for the public? All right, and I know that we did mention Jim Kaminsky, and so let's go ahead and start with him for public comment.
Well, good afternoon, Board Supervisors. My pleasure to address you this afternoon. I'm Jim Kaminsky. As you know, I am the President of the South Lake County Fire Protection District. And although there was mention of Cal Fire, South Lake actually are the, were the first ones in, South Lake County Fire, the first ones into the geysers for any kind of emergency, whether it's a fire, medical emergency hazardous materials call, and Cal Fire certainly is there behind us for sure. What I wanted to discuss with you from a fire protection point of view is this, is you, I'm sure you're all very familiar with the remote location and the difficult access to get into the geysers. Geographically, yes, a lot of the, the power plants and stuff are in Sonoma County. Three of them are in Lake County. However, the response is, as we've seen in with these different fires, is South Lake County and Cal Fire are on scene from the Lake County side, usually an average of about 20 to 30 minutes before anyone gets in from the Sonoma County side. And why this is problematic is based on the topography and the access is an average fire engine pumps 1,000 gallons of water a minute. However, they only carry 500 gallons in their water tanks. And fire hydrants are force multipliers. If they go up there, we don't have fire hydrants, they're going to pump that 500 gallons of water and then they're going to be sitting there like lame ducks, not able to mitigate the fire. And that's my major concern from the Fire Protection District is protecting those assets up there. The, the ask I know is, is a huge one, but from the fire protection point of view, I consulted with Cal Fire and our operations staff at South Lake County. And the fire hydrants are our biggest concern. It's not necessarily the operations, I can't get into that. But from the fire protection, firefighter safety and, and risk management, we want those hydrants charged. And as such, we would support the request to get this variance for this one month so we could adequately protect those resources. That's the end of my report or statement and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? I'm looking in the boardroom. Go ahead and stand and come to the microphone if you have a public comment. Yep. And if you're in the Zoom room, please press on the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand or dial star nine if you have called into the Zoom room. Thank you, Sam.
Joan Moss. Yolo County is asking Lake County for 250 gallons of lake water.
250 acre feet.
250 acres of lake water to clean the cooling towers up at Calpine. Is that true?
I'm not sure it's to clean. I think it's for fire suppression.
Fire suppression?
Ensuring the longevity of the cooling towers.
Okay, long ago, I learned from Greg Dillinger that water was not even taken out of Clear Lake for the geysers if the lake was underneath a certain level.
That's why they're asking us for a special request.
Is, will the lake be underneath that level when they want the water?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would urge you to think of what is practical and what is necessary. I'd like to know if they can find other ways of fire, fire suppression. Because Lake County doesn't even give water to the, to the, the total pipeline, the full project, if the lake isn't up to a certain level. And I don't think we have enough water level high enough to, to supply this water. And I'd like to know, I didn't know that it was possible to just get lake water that is not treated wastewater. Is that possible?
Yes, it has been possible as we just suggested.
Apparently so.
As we just stated, there is a contract.
I don't know much, but I don't think that we can afford to give water out of Clear Lake if it's underneath a certain level, if it's already below a certain level by which they cannot bring water up there. I just wanted to give you my input. I think water is more precious than money these days. And I know of people that are carting and tanking water for their own personal use now that don't have enough water. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I see none here in the board chambers. Anyone in the Zoom room? I see we have Kristen Sick.
Hi, this is Kristen Sickie, General Manager of Yolo County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my comment. Clearly, I, I imagine all of you are very aware of our district's relationship with Lake County and the slum of decree and the existence of it. And I just wanted to reiterate, you know, the emergency request, or I guess the basis that this is being requested is just a, a request for us to kind of come together as a community and be able to support one another. I know, like the previous commenter, their, water is very precious at this time. We're in a drought year. It may be a prolonged drought, but I just, I appreciate you taking the time to consider this. I know it's a really tough decision and I hope you know that we, we are wanting to just be partners with our neighbors here, Lake County and the geysers and Sonoma County. So just feel free, obviously, to reach out to our district with any other concerns in the future about this, but thanks for taking the time today.
Thank you for your comment. Any further public comments? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for further discussion. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Simon.
Mr. Chair, I know that obviously we got some earlier discussions as we move into this and we talked about the declaration of drought and those types of things. But we're looking at an opportunity, you know, if it was a request, this is just for me speaking, the board will obviously weigh in on this, that as Ms. Sickie just said, you know, on collaboration, corporate, you know, cooperation as we're going through these things, we are preparing for the worst case scenario, but we have someone who's come here as one of our stakeholders and made a request, understand our drinking water concerns as we move into this drought. But myself today, I am prepared to support this letter, the request letter from Calpine. And when it's time, I'll be ready to make a motion.
Supervisor Piska.
I think this is, this is, this is about as difficult conversation as we can have right now. Our county's been through so many disasters. And here, we're looking forward into another one. So any decision that we make today, we're not going to take lightly, we haven't taken lightly. And all of us have put a lot of thought into this situation. So if we look at the amount of water, which would be evaporated in a single day in the summer, so this request is for about 3.6 hours of water, which would normally be evaporated in a day. And it's a lot of water, but that kind of puts it in perspective of how much we lose each day to evaporation. And I appreciate that Calpine has scaled back their water and their water usage from the lake in anticipation of this. I think Supervisor Simon and I, we feel, I, I'm not going to speak for you, but I, I think that we both feel that our districts are very vulnerable to any type of fire in the geyser area. And with the fuel conditions, the way they are now, and any fire this time of year could become another out of control wildfire that we have already experienced so many times. And we have Chief Kaminsky here speaking on his experience. And he's been with South Lake and Cal Fire for many, many years. And so I appreciate that he came on today to speak to that. I originally thought that the loss of the energy to the grid would be more significant. I, I think it is significant. I think we have to look at, you know, we've got heat waves, we have a heat wave happening right now. If temperatures just continue to climb and we're looking at, you know, mid-July weather in the end of this month and in June, that is going to impact the grid, not having the 25 megawatts. So as difficult as this is, I'm in agreement with Supervisor Simon that this is a, a hard request that we, we should consider.
Okay, any other comment?
Thank you both for speaking.
And saying those things, I, I've been trying to weigh it in my head, you know, I, I agree with Supervisor Sabate that water is life and that it is very important that we ensure that we prepare for the future as we don't know if this is going to continue on. However, I, I am still worried about the fire. And so I think for me, the fact that one note, and that's what I thought about when I first read this, was how much we lose in a day. I can live with that and I want to make sure that we aren't subject to any loss when it comes to another emergency fire or anything like that. So I'm prepared to move forward and vote in favor of this.
Any other comments or questions from the board? So I, I will say that some of my questions were key questions I needed to understand better, what does maintenance on this pipeline look like? And if you're going to have 15 year joints and only start on the year 15 to figure out how to maintain and change them, already you're behind schedule. Then there's hiccups that goes along with pretty much every project. This should have probably been started in 2015, if not earlier. And we get to this point where now we're, we're in a drought and, and we're talking about potentially having July weather. So that's 900 acre feet more per day than your average summer, which means we're going to maybe lose that much more. We're talking with a fire chief who knows very well that our seasons have extended by 75 days, if not longer, for fire seasons, which means that much more hot weather, that much more evaporation. 250 acre feet is crucial when right now, we just heard from our water purve, one of our water purveyors that they're already struggling with the lake quality when trying to bring potable. uh, when trying to bring potable drinking water to our populations. That's only going to increase as the days go by and as our water level goes down. I absolutely agree that fire is an issue, but fire is only an issue if this project actually happens this year. And the only reason it's happening this year is because they're, they're behind schedule. And I'm just gonna be very blunt, I still don't see how this is our problem and we have to take away from our stuff during a critical time when our water needs to be saved and salvaged. And if they could wait to 2021 to make this happen, when on the 15-year lifespan of the joints, again, um, you're putting us between a rock and a hard place when we made no decision to be in this place whatsoever. Nature created the drought, uh, and we are behind schedule in maintaining, maintaining our, our pipeline. And that, that is, I wanna be uh, to contribute, but I fail to see the equality or the equity of contribution where we're giving away our drinking water in order for maintenance that's behind on a pipeline to be done when it should have been done probably three years ago. So I don't think it's fair that this is brought to us. I mean, on, on, on the north of our county, they want to take our water. Now there's a project happening out of county and we have a document from another county, a third county, saying, yes, you can. Where, where have we been in these discussions? I just can't help but feel like we're always being pulled for our resources. And, and, and I'm, I can't, I, I can't say yes to this. I, I think that this is the worst timing and I'm sorry you haven't maintained your pipeline. I hope that you're able to maintain it through the year if it doesn't pass, because I don't want you to stop it where now it becomes a much larger fire hazard, which puts our firefighters in unfortunate conditions and danger, uh, and it's unnecessary. And to me, it's not whether or not the project goes on or not, uh, it's not whether or not the water comes or not, it's whether the project happens or not. Because they should not be doing things to uh, place anybody in danger because of this project. And I would even say, maybe uh, let's, we were just talking about preparing for the future. Maybe there needs to be better wa, uh, water holding tanks in the area to be able to deal with these types of circumstances so that we don't have to ask for water when there is no water to ask for, uh, or very little water to ask for. So that, that's my position. I, I think it's the worst timing of all timings. I don't like it.
To be clear, none of us like it. It is the worst timing and you're correct on all of that. This is just a very, very difficult decision for all of us.
Supervisor Scott.
I would, I was just going to definitely agree with you, this is the worst timing. But I think we have to look at fire suppression and making sure that we're keeping our communities safe. And I, I think we'd have to look back at, at Lake County's timeline. We've made a lot of bad decisions, have not kept up um, what we should have done. And I would hate for the state and the federal to come back and say, you know what? Lake County, we're not gonna help you out because you didn't do what you were supposed to do. You didn't keep up on your maintenance. So I think this comes back again to helping each other out. And um, again, this is a bad decision, but I think we need to support it.
Yep. Supervisor Simon.
You know, I, I talked earlier today about long-term preparations. And you know, obviously, we're all new to the board here in years, but there, you know, there are projects that now we're looking at for long-term stuff, economic development opportunities, uh, where, you know, let's just say, the Full Circle Project, was talked about 15 years ago, now it's coming back. Where affluent would be able to go with a partner and it would be going up the mountain. Uh, the, the county did not move forward with because maybe too big at that time. You know, so I think we need to just look at this as collaboration. This is an eye-opening event. I made that comment to our Water Resources Director. What's the long-term planning for the next 50 years? If we think this is the only board that's gonna deal with something like this, you're in the wrong business. You need to have long-term vision on where we're going here. Water is life, there is no doubt about that. But we've got to be better stewards how we use uh, the water that comes from our drinking fuds and the ones that are leaving through our, you know, our restrooms. And really looking at how we move forward in collaboration to do that. Timing could not be any worse, there's no doubt about that. But if you look at this, if you keep pushing things off and we don't look at that sustainability and resiliency in a long-term, you know, fashion, another board will be right in the same situation. So today, I support this, make it very clear to Calpine and supporting this. This ain't happening again this year. This is not an easy decision. If it was not at this timeframe, there wouldn't even be an opportunity to have this discussion uh, like we're having today. So just want to be very clear with that. And I do take this very seriously, looking at this. But I also look at collaboration for the long-term success of the people in Lake County. Like I said, again, this lake's been here for millions of years. We're trying to make it adapt to us, we need to adapt to it because it's gonna be here long after we are. And we need to take care of it and steward it like we're looking to do in the long-term future. So, you know, I do support this. If there's no more comment, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to support the request made by Calpine Corporation and um, move to have the chair sign the draft letter of support uh, for um, Calpine's request. That was kind of confusing one, is that? Okay.
You got the nod.
Kind of went over, all over there.
To support the request and to execute.
Support the request. I, I move to support the request of Calpine.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabate.
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the healthy discussion as well on a difficult topic. Our last item is 7.1, our calendars. Let's go ahead and start with Supervisor Simon.
Uh, finish up today with closed session. I don't have anything this evening, moving to tomorrow. I am double booked uh, tomorrow morning. I know we have the Economic Development Task Force, but I also have the Workforce Alliance of North Bay. Do you have that on your calendar, Jessica? So we've got a working session tomorrow with that. So, uh, you know, we, we need to make warm on the other side. From Bruce told me, I'm gonna have to uh, miss the EDTF uh, meeting. I just wanted to let you know that, Supervisor Sabate.
Yep.
You know, so I'll be attending that tomorrow. And then later in the afternoon, I have the uh, CCR continuation of policy work that we need to do with Supervisor Scott and Carol and everybody. And then um, potentially also had on Thursday, have the, had a CDD uh, committee workshop. Do we have something on, do you have something on your calendar Thursday? Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure. It was a different color, it was a different color on mine, so I just want to make sure. And then Thursday night, have math, uh, at math, Mike Thompson will be there for uh, for a presentation at the math board on Thursday. And then Friday, um, I won't see how my calendar goes, but it's my grandson's birthday and I'm hoping to attend that in the afternoon, so. And then the 15th, 16th, back here on uh, the 17th, uh, meeting with Carol. And then later that afternoon, the Risk Reduction Authority meeting. And um, I know Jessica's gonna talk about this too, but kind of reporting over last week, we had our first Lake County Risk Reduction Authority presentation. I didn't get to get with Sam, maybe Jessica already did with all the numbers and everything. I know we had about 70 people in Zoom, uh, but got some really good feedback. We got a lot of work to do. That was one of the first events. Uh, but really getting that information out to our community. And this year cannot be any critical. The fire season, we know is it's going to be. Uh, we just need to be prepared, be ready to go. And um, we'll continue on that path, so that's my calendars for this week, so.
Thank you very much. Supervisor, Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, tomorrow I'll be, well, after this meeting, of course, we'll do a agenda review. Uh, tomorrow I'll be here at the office, conducting business here. Um, Thursday, I'm not sure why I have this, it says Blue Zones. I don't know why I wrote that and I'm looking at my phone, I don't see anything.
You got a calendar invite from, I believe, David Santos to discuss Blue Zones.
Okay.
And Blue Zones are uh, where people uh, live to be an average of 100 years old.
Okay. I'll look in my email, fill that one in, because I have it from 12 to 1. And then after that, Stormwater Spring, Stormwater Spring Clean Water Program meeting. Um, Friday, I'll be here at the office. Uh, there's a class I have to do with CSAC. Uh, 3:00 PM, I have a cannabis uh, meeting actually, and then uh, Saturday, I'll be attending the sunrise ceremony. Sunrise Ceremony is uh, something that Clayton Duncan puts on every year on May 15th. It's 100, it'll be 170 years after the Bloody Island massacre. And so what he does is the sunrise ceremony and invites people to uh, honor the ancestors that were massacred during that timeframe and also um, commensurate and forgive and give a blessing to the land and the people that attend. And so I'll be at that and that's like at sunrise, which is like 5:00 AM, so. So I'll be there. And then uh, back here Monday, um, with the meeting with the, the CAO. And then Tuesday, back here for the, well, Supervisor's meeting.
Perfect. Supervisor Scott.
Um, tomorrow morning, I have meetings with constituents and then a CCRR meeting at 3:00. And then on Thursday, I have the Lake County Agriculture Meeting that starts 11:00 that I will have to leave for a few minutes at noon because I'm speaking at Blue Zones for, uh, they have me down for a minute. And then I'll get back on to the agriculture meeting. And then um, that evening, I'll be attending um, the Seraptimus Meeting in person at Wine in the Willows here in Lakeport. And then on Friday, um, I have a Hope Rising Meeting at 2:30 and then Cannabis Tax at 3:00. Sunday, I'll be attending the Fairgrounds Cleanup starting at 9:00 AM. So if anybody's interested, um, get on the website of the Fairgrounds and come down and help us clean up the Fairgrounds. And then meetings with constituents on the morning of the 17th. And then a Hope Rising Meeting at 11:00 and then back here on Tuesday.
Thank you. And Supervisor Pyska.
So I, Sam did share the numbers from our event and we, I think we did have about 70 people on the Zoom. We had 1,100 people directly reached on Facebook, 3,700 indirectly, 21 shares. IT. IT? Oh, YouTube views, 25. And uh, um, an increase in the Peg audience. Uh, so it was really successful. I have all the prizes in my car and um, when we're done this afternoon, I'll, I'll take them down to the admin office across the hall for everybody to pick up. Um, I, you know, this is something that I've been wanting to do for many years and it's something that the Claberry Council's done really successfully in person. And so it's really great to kind of bring some of that work that um, that we've started in, in the Clab community since the valley fire to the rest of the community. And I know Supervisor Simon and I had planned to do it last year. So um, this is the beginning of the outreach work that the Risk Reduction Authority is going to be continuing, so it's pretty exciting. Tomorrow, I have a really full week this week. So tomorrow, um, I have a committee meeting at 8:00, the Workforce Alliance at 9:00, and getting my vaccine at 12:30. And cavern check-in uh, at 6:30 and that's really preparing the community for fire season with the volunteer radio network. So on Thursday, I'm hoping I'm gonna make all these meetings and I'm not sick uh, from the vaccine. So I um, I've got a Fire Safe Council meeting and the, our first ag committee meeting, um, a CDD committee meeting and a meeting with um, David Santos. Then on Friday, another Fire Safe Council Committee meeting. And then I'm gonna be going out to the Conocdi Lookout Tower and getting filled in on um, everything that's been happening with that program and the infrastructure. Monday begins our CMAT. Yeah, which is so exciting. So um, the T, the CMAT group is going to actually start the end of this week internally. And then on Monday is our kickoff meeting with all of the stakeholders. And we'll be working on that through the 28th. So that's um, starting and we also have a Risk Reduction Authority meeting in the afternoon.
Thank you very much. Uh, so real quick on my last week's uh, items that I went to, just want to highlight real quick that we had an APC and Lake Transit Authority, and that's Area Planning Commission, uh, and Lake Transit Authority meeting. And uh, just the quick highlights of the, other than approving budgets and whatnot, uh, there was an extension because of CARES Act leftover money to continue the free uh, bus route, or the free bus fares until at least, I think, the end of May. Uh, and then we'll review where we are then. Um, and then also the uh, we extended free rides for college students for an additional year as well, uh, due to there being some leftover funds in that program, um, based on the fact that there was less rides given during the pandemic. So those are uh, two wonderful things to help uh, with any transportation issues that people may have. And, and then we'll keep you posted as the changes do come down the pike. So let's see, finishing up the day here, we're gonna have closed session and agenda review, possibly. We'll see, maybe that'll be tomorrow. And I'm looking at the wrong week here. There we go. Tomorrow, I'm gonna start off the day with a Treasure Tax Collector Committee meeting, uh, continuing with an Economic Development Task Force. I didn't make it, I tried, I don't know what happened. Uh, tried to make it to the CC4C meeting last week. I will try again this week. Uh, later on, on Thursday, uh, Blue Zone Meeting and CSAC Phone Call and Stormwater Spring Meeting. That's all I see is Stormwater, Stormwater Spring Clean Water Program Meeting Agenda. Then on Friday, um, have a uh, Lake County Broadband uh, Discussion, continuing our discussion with um, I forget what the name of the company, and one, one of them is Etheric. They got something like $8 million from the federal government. Another one is Starlink, which I'm sure every one of us are looking up at the sky these days to see if we can catch the uh, SpaceX program, Starlink. Um, because that will also be bringing broadband internet to our community for certain areas that the federal government has provided access to. Uh, and the third group, which unfortunately I can't come up with the name at the tip of my tongue, uh, we'll be meeting with them to discuss how they're going to be deploying uh, broadband internet in our community. And that is also still with the help of the Upstate California Connect Consortium out of Chico State, who has helped us throughout our process of getting more broadband. Uh, getting further and further along in our discussions. Uh, LCOE has been joining us as we find it very important to make sure that our children, our youth have access to the internet, especially for school purposes. Um, and so those discussions continue. And then on the 17th, I um, it pops up. I am meeting with the City of Clear Lake with their downtown uh, strategies to talk about art discussion as I'm working with the Rural Arts Initiative, to go ahead and place more art in the city of Clear Lake. In fact, one of the projects that I started working with them over the course of the past year will be coming to fruition real soon. Uh, we've been working with a lot of, well, a lot, about five or six different artists in our community. Um, and we will be putting up what I hope will be the first of many. Uh, it's only in the city of Clear Lake, but I envision this being countywide, uh, where we have four fish forms, bass fish forms that will be set up. Uh, one of them is made of metal and the other three are made out of wood. The ones that are made out of wood are made out of trees that were cut down due to the valley fire. So it's kind of a repurposed um, uh, wood um, with some very nostalgic feelings attached to it. And I hope that we can continue that art and move it around the county. We are the number one bass fishing lake uh, in America. Um, everybody loves coming to our lake for uh, the abundance of fish. And it's uh, not something that I see easily when I come into the county other than knowing that I'm in Lake County. And so I travel in so many different places. If you go in Wyoming, you're gonna see buffaloes everywhere. If you go to Sonoma, you see cows or Napa, you see roosters. We don't seem to be displaying uh, one of our attractions, uh, which happens to be our fish. And so I wanted to try and get that started and we'll see if it takes on for the rest of the county. Uh, so continuing those conversations and then meeting with our CAO, joining a CSAC Phone Call and back here on the 18th for another Board Supervisor Session. And that is my calendar. Did we miss anything today at all? Are we ready for closed session? Don't answer that. Don't answer that. Um, our closed session has four items. Uh, 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Center for Biological Diversity versus County of Lake Etowah. And then 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, California Native Plant Society versus County of Lake Etowah. 8.3, public employee evaluation title registrar voters. 8.4, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B, appointment of public health officer. And with that, we are done with our public session and we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today.
Mr. Chair, you do have a separate invite for, uh, closed session in your inbox now. Each board member does. Thank you.